All right, good evening. This is the study session of January tenth, 2019. It is now five forty-one, and we will begin the roll call.
President Cortese?
Here.
Vice President Nguyen?
Here.
Clerk Lay?
Here.
Member Edetta?
Here.
Member Chavez?
Here.
And I would also like to let everyone know that our student governing board will be represented by the Chair for Public Relations of the Student Governing Board, Nina Nguyen, who is a student at Evergreen Valley High School, which will be with us tonight. So I would like to welcome everyone and let you know that anyone requesting to speak to the board on any agendized item or any item not on the agenda, please fill out a speaker request form, that would be these, gold for adults, yellow for students, located at the entrance of the boardroom, and give them to our Board Secretary, Ms. Mary Gillan, back here. Please note that all meetings are recorded. All regular and special board meetings of the Board of Trustees and board study sessions are now being streamed live on meeting nights and are also available for viewing the day after the meeting by accessing the district's YouTube channel listed on the district's webpage at www.esushd.org under the Quick Links section. The board is not able to respond to items that are not on the agenda or any personnel issues. Please do not state names of individuals. Your comments will be noted and will be directed to the superintendent and/or the appropriate staff member for response. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. The timer display will indicate when your three minutes have concluded. Timers will be up here and back there. Please speak clearly into the microphone and state your name for the record. If you need a translator in Spanish or Vietnamese, please see the translators located in the back of the room. All right, so moving on to item three, adoption of the agenda. Is there any discussion about the agenda this evening?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item number four, any members who wish to address the board, and I have no speaker cards, so we will move on from that to item number five. Particular item 5.0, presentation and/or discussion regarding our equity work within the multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS framework, and I will turn that over to Mr. Glenn Vandersee.
Thank you very much. As we've said before, when we as a district clearly define a goal and work together to accomplish it for positive change for students, we do that. And an example of that is when we acted uniformly as a district to move to A through G as a default curriculum, and we've seen the data shift in that area since that decision was made. Last spring, we made a decision as a district to engage into a four-year program to build equitable communities for all our students, to build common assurances across our schools, within our classrooms, so that our students receive the supports they need to be successful, whether it's in the classroom, outside of it, whether it's academic, social, emotional. And we began a four-year plan with that, and for tonight, we'd like to invite our Director of Instruction, Teresa Marquez, to make sure that you are all aware of the framework for change called the multi-tiered system of support that is being utilized as a process and as an eventuality within our system to make sure that we do build those equitable communities, where students are welcomed as they are, where their strengths and areas for growth are known, and that the adults in our system have the ability and the skillset and the systems are in place to, as a default, as a common assurance, to positively respond so that they can be learners who are strategic and can extend their thinking, function as the mathematicians, scientists, historians that our valley and our world needs. So, leading us tonight, I'm gonna just go ahead and say it straight up, this is a framework. This will not be what homework centers are where at what school. This is very much the framework for you to understand the structure of this four-year path that we are beginning to build the equitable communities. And Teresa Marquez has been working diligently with our partners, Collaborative Learning Solutions, been working very closely with our eight schools within Cohort One. One set of our schools is beginning as a cohort this year in this work. The second set will begin next year, and she's been working diligently with them and is here to present the framework to you.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, superintendents, council. My name's Teresa Marquez, and I'm Director of Instruction. So I just want to make sure that I point out to you what the intended outcomes are with this particular presentation so that we're clear as to what the goal is and hopefully what the learning will be after the presentation. So specifically, we want to ensure that we develop a shared understanding of the work that we are going to engage in as a district and that we've already begun in order to establish equitable communities. Specifically, we want to deepen our understanding and knowledge of the multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS, which we've decided that that's going to be the framework that we're going to use to reach those equitable communities. And very importantly, as part of this, is to make the connections as we respond to two guiding questions. One, what is my connection to the work? So even for me as a Director of Instruction, what is that connection to the work in my role? And for you as board members, what's your connection to the work? And then what's the messaging specific to the work? And so those are the intended outcomes and the learnings that I hope that we're able to get to by the end of the presentation. So specifically, I want to start with just giving you an overarching picture of what the actual tangible work is, so to speak, and who is involved in it. So as Mr. Vandersee mentioned, we have a Cohort One team of schools that consists of the schools that are listed there on the slide. We have seven schools, and that include two of our small but necessaries that are connected to our comprehensive high schools. Specifically, the main work that these schools are going to be involved in is a deeper understanding of the actual multi-tiered system of support, and then developing a plan for the rollout of that framework specific to their sites in coordination with the district. Also, I want to point out to you that the implicit bias learning sessions are a big portion of this work, and it's connected to this work around equity. We have scheduled twenty-six sessions. We have about fifty staff per session that are attending, and it's really to the goal of getting to a shared language and understanding of how our biases may impact our work. And specifically, I want to point out to you that the implicit bias sessions that we're doing are really about the intrapersonal that has to happen with each of the adults in our system in order to be able to progress us into the interpersonal that will allow us to interact with adults, with the kids, with all our stakeholders, and then to the structural aspect of the work that we're going to do. And MTSS is the framework that will allow us to be able to do that, to shift from the intrapersonal to the interpersonal to the structural.
Approximately, how many sessions have we held so far, and approximately how many attendees?
So we've had eleven sessions in the first semester, and we actually held one today. And if I include the numbers for today, we're right at five hundred and eighty-seven staff that have attended. And that's including staff across the board, teachers, paraprofessionals, office clerical staff, district office staff from all departments.
I don't know. Do you want to wait, questions at the end?
No, as they come.
I'm curious what, so intrapersonal and structural? I know interpersonal, that's you and me, right? But what are those other two?
So the intra is me, me being reflective and understanding my own biases, myself, in that role. And I believe three of, or two of our board members here have participated in the actual training, and so that particular training was around the intra, the me looking and being self-reflective of the biases that I may hold and how that may impact my role within the system. And the structure would be the systemic as a district. What are going to be those common assurances that we're going to get to that are going to allow us to be able to, as a system, say, this is who we are as Eastside, and this is how we do business?
So that would have to do with our policies and practices and things like that?
Correct. And I'm glad you're already seeing those connections with your role as board member. So specifically, digging deeper into the actual work of the multi-tiered systems of support, we have currently three working groups. One is a district leadership team, which consists of about fourteen members, including union representation, district directors, and site administrators, that are taking a balcony view of our approach of our systems. We're looking at data, we're looking at what is the work that is being done within the other groups, and we're looking, are we going in the direction that we want to be going in? Our next group is our specific MTSS work group, which consists of about fifteen people, and that includes teachers, district personnel, site administrators, and teachers on special assignment. And that's the group that's really looking into the details, the note and bolt of the actual framework, developing definitions, working towards the common assurances, reviewing the data. And I'll get later in the presentation, you'll see a little bit more detail specific to that work group and what are the deliverables that they're going to be providing. And then finally, we have the Cohort One Schools, Tier One teams, that are really focusing on the climate and culture at each of their school sites. And that's a big system, a big component of the MTSS work. And I'll bring this up again when I get into the actual definitions and learnings around MTSS so that you can start making the connections. But I wanted to give you an overview as to what are the working groups that we currently have in place. We also have our systemic monitoring oversight team, which consists of district leadership, as well as our partners, which is Collaborative Learning Solutions, which include the lead, John Eiler and Nancy Dong. And then, of course, we know that it's important to include even within the MTSS framework, stakeholder voice. So we have the LCAP Student Advisor Group and our Stakeholder Equity Committee, which contributes to the work that we're doing with MTSS. So what is our multi-tiered systems of support? Specifically in California, the way it is defined is as a framework that is intended to focus on instruction that is student-centered, that differentiates for the needs of students, and that allows us to align our systems so that students can succeed both academically and socially. For us as a district, we need to ensure that we define it and how it connects to us. And so I'm going to take you through some of that progress and some of the work that we've done within the MTSS so that we have an understanding in how it connects specifically to our equitable communities. Specifically, MTSS is a system of prevention, early intervention, and tiered support. It ensures that all our students, those that are struggling, those that are accelerated, achieve to high academic and behavioral standards. It's a framework or a structure that we can use to organize our practices so that we're more consistent across the board to be able to support the student outcomes that we want to see. And finally, it's based on data. We look at both individual student progress and the results overall of student outcomes so that then we can make decisions based off of data about further instruction and intervention and supports that will be needed. So when we look at our goal, our why of equitable communities, and we look at what it is that we're trying to attain here in Eastside Union High School District, we can actually match it one-for-one with what MTSS actually is. And so as I start to go through these slides, hopefully you'll begin to see the connection and our why for taking the approach that we're choosing to take. Because we want to ensure that all students are welcomed as they are, we know that MTSS ensures that all students achieve to high levels, both academically and in terms of behavior. Because we know that equitable communities will be reached if we know through data the strengths and areas of growth for our students, MTSS allows us to be able to do that by looking at student progress and making decisions based on that data. And we know that we want to positively respond to those needs that students have, whether they be social, emotional, academic, or overall mental health and wellness. Well, MTSS allows us to be able to do that because it provides a framework for us to be able to organize and unify those practices that are going to allow us to support student outcomes. And so you can see the direct correlation between what we are hoping to attain with our equitable communities and what MTSS, in terms of the framework, can provide for us to be able to really attain those equitable communities. And so I want to point, yes?
I'm sorry. And stop me if this is something you're going to get to, but if you go, yeah, so on the lower right, it says, "A framework structure used to organize practices and unify them to support student outcomes." Can you give me an example of what, like, what's an example of that?
So an example would be when you hear, you heard Glenn say, "attaining those common assurances." So it could be that a practice that we decide to use for academic instruction is academic discourse across all the board, across all content areas. So we're going to organize around that particular practice, meaning we're going to align our resources towards that, we're going to provide professional development specific to that, we're going to support that particular practice so that then we could measure, once we've been faithful to that practice, to be able to see if it's really working and producing the outcomes that we want. Another thing could be around the climate and culture. So it could be, a practice could be around restorative practices, and we specifically choose to do affirmative statements. And we ensure that, one, everyone knows what we mean when we say affirmative statements, that we know what it looks like in the classroom, and that we know how to measure it. And I will get into a little bit more detail later on, but just to give you that response. So it's important, as we go through MTSS, and it is a what and a how, that we don't lose sight of the lens for us within our role, and that's the why. The why we do the work that we do, because we know, and research shows, that that collective efficacy is going to yield higher results. And there's research around that. When people understand the why and can rally around that common why, student outcomes, higher student outcomes will be produced. And so for us, you're going to see this slide time and time again, our why is the equitable Eastside communities. We exist as a district to attain these communities, where all students are welcomed as they are, where we know their strengths and areas of growth, we can positively respond to any need that surfaces, and we're preparing them for college and career by providing tasks that demand production at higher levels. So it doesn't change. So when you hear MTSS, oh, is this the new thing? Is this the new educational flavor of the month? Because as educators, we know that that tends to happen. It's not. That's not the systemic approach we're choosing to take. For us, this continues to be what we're working towards. Getting our students prepared for beyond us by providing them with opportunities where they can learn the skills that will be transferable beyond us so that they're aligned to what we have told our community we're going to produce within our graduate profile. And we know that instructionally, that's going to happen when they have experiences in the classroom with tasks that demand production at higher levels. And so this still continues to be what we're working towards. It's just that now, we are being more intentional by selecting a framework that is going to allow for us to be systemic about how we get to this.
What's this C R M abbreviation for?
Cognitive Rigor Matrix. And so that could be a whole nother study session, if you'd like, just on the cognitive rigor matrix. And so one of the things that we've been working on from our educational services side of the house is in really allowing all our instructional teams, all our various teams, to really make connections to the work and have an understanding as to why we're engaged in the work. And so the essential questions that I presented to you at the beginning, I want to bring back to you as we then go through the what of MTSS. What's the connection to the work, and what's the messaging? Essentially, why are we engaging in this work as a district? What's our elevator message? Should we get asked by a community member, by a teacher, by a parent, by a student? So being able to have that, I think, is important because it cannot be that you just take, you know, Teresa's words, or this is what's on paper, but you have to be able to find your connection to the work to be able to then message and then put the work in place for you, once you understand the why within your role. So, why MTSS? Why have we decided to take this approach? So research clearly tells us that if we implement MTSS as a framework and structure, they'll see, we will see decreases in suspension and expulsion rates, a decrease in discipline referrals, decrease in referrals to special education, a decrease in chronic autism, as well as incidence of bullying or harassment, dropout rates, and a decrease in risk factors for students. And on the kind of other end of it, you'll see kind of the connection to it, that you see there's evidence of increases in improvement, obviously in attendance, so students are more apt to come to school, you'll see increases in graduation rates, student academic achievement, school climate improvement, instructional minutes, integrated instructional time, and protective factors. And so this has been research-based, it's evidence-based, and it's really the push even across the United States for this framework because it's evidence-based, and there's a lot of research around that shows, and it's based on data. And that's the key piece, that we have evidence to be able to determine its efficacy once we get to the implementation phase.
Risk factor or protector factor?
So a risk factor is a factor that may contribute to a higher negative outcome for a student. So for example, ACES, Adverse Childhood Experiences, could be, so a student may have had a traumatic experience, so that may lead to a higher risk for a negative outcome. And a protective would be the opposite of that. So anything that is a positive countering event that allows a kid to have maybe more self-control or more self-advocacy, positive self-image. And so I know this looks overwhelming, so I'll kind of just tell you that there's no expectation for you to become experts in this, but I did want you, I wanted to show you this so that you can have an overarching picture of the structure of MTSS. So just very briefly, in terms of taking you through the components. So the MTSS structure has some key essential elements, and I'll give you a little bit more details on this in a minute. But really, the foundation and the takeaway, even if just for today, in terms of what MTSS is, it's a tier, a three-tiered framework that allows for us to be able to provide instruction and support when it comes to both climate and culture and academics at a universal level, meaning for all students, at a more targeted level, and then at a more intensive level. Okay? So this is kind of MTSS as a bigger picture. In the next few slides, I'm going to break it down for you a little bit more so you can see how each of those pieces, what each of those pieces are, but I wanted to first give you just an overarching picture of the whole structure and framework so that you can have an idea as to how they fit. Yes?
It would work better for my eye if Tier One was followed not by the word "foundation" but by the word "universal," Tier Two followed by "targeted," Tier Three followed by "intensive," instead of "foundation" in each one of those headings, you know?
And yeah, and this is just an example. So the beauty of the MTSS process is that we define MTSS the way it fits for us as a district, and we define each of the tiers the way it fits for us as a district. So thank you, that's a good idea.
Or you could say Tier One, principles, or you say that too, or, I mean, because they are the foundation of one of these tiers, right?
Correct.
They're two different tiers, and these are the foundations. But then, if it's confusing, you can say principles, or like what you suggested, Mr. Herrer.
Yeah, and we can look at that. I think the intent of this was to say that the foundations of Tier One are these elements, the foundations of Tier Two are these elements and so forth. But in terms of us defining them, we can absolutely define them as a universal, targeted, and intensive. Thank you. And so, again, I know this may seem a little bit overwhelming, but these are the five key MTSS elements that fall within the structure. And it's important in each one to just kind of pull out some key words. We know that the MTSS is a framework that is going to allow us to pair instruction and intervention. So it's no longer just instruction, and I'm done and I did it, but no, it's instruction, I have data that tells me you're not quite getting it yet, so what do I do in that moment to intervene and support? In terms of the collective inquiry and administrative engagement, this is huge because it speaks to the collective efficacy, again, going back to the why, and knowing that there's going to be a process by which all stakeholders are going to be able to learn together and contribute and be able to rally around a shared vision and an alignment of resources that will ultimately give us the student outcomes that we're looking for. A big piece of it is the data and assessment piece, really looking at the data and how we use the data to make decisions. In December, at the last board meeting, my colleague Kristen Keen presented to you data points, both for the academic success analysis and the LCAP key performance measures. So it's really, so we presented it, now what do we do with it? How do we, then, do we use the data to be able to inform what it is that our kids need and how it is that we're going to intervene when they need that intervention? There is a component for being able to engage our students and families within the process so that they're aware of what's happening for their learning. And then, of course, it's big on ensuring that the practices that we reach as our common assurances are inclusive and are based on research. And so to kind of simplify all those pieces, really what we're looking at when we're talking about our multi-tiered systems of support when it comes to the systems is two key aspects of why we exist as an organization. One is the climate and culture, and the other piece is the academics. And within the climate and culture, it's around the climate, which we can, some of our schools refer it as Positive Behavior Intervention Support, or the PBIS model, where you have common expectations across the board for all students in terms of behavior and adult responses, restorative practices, and social, emotional learning and mental health, the whole wellness aspect for our students. And academics, the teaching, learning, and interventions that go into it. So if you look at it, this is that holistic approach that we talk about that's actually included as part of our board policy that speaks to the wellness aspect of our district and our students. So now I'm going to take you through each of the tiers. And again, not getting caught up, if I ask you please, with the word "foundation," but understanding that that's subject to change, and we can change that, but knowing that this essentially are the key aspects or elements of what makes up the Tier One. Tier One is intended to be preventative and universal. Those are the two key words. It's preventative. We're not reacting. We are actually putting in place practices that are going to help students in the moment, and we're not reacting once they failed. We're trying to prevent that. We're ensuring that the instruction is future-ready, meaning we're going to prepare them for what comes beyond us or next, and that when they are not getting that instruction, that there's some timely interventions that are taking place. There's a Tier One team at each of the sites that would be the lead in being able to ensure that there are data-driven decisions being made to ensure that, once we've developed those common assurances, there's fidelity to those common assurances, and we have data to then assess whether we're being faithful to those practices or not, and then which are then the kids that are going to need that additional support.
What, can you give me an example of who might be on that Tier One team, or what does that look like on each side?
Yeah, I'll get to some specifics of the actual Tier One team later, if that's okay.
I can wait.
Thank you. And so when you look at it in terms of the graphic that maybe most, many of you may be familiar with in terms of the MTSS, it's the entire pyramid or the entire triangle because it's for all students. So the goal is that, both in academics and behavior, so it's not separated, there's not one MTSS for academics and then one TMSS for behavior, it's integrated. The goal is a hundred percent of our students are going to succeed at high levels, both academically and when it comes to their social, emotional, or their behavior. And we know with the measures that we hope to put in place that it will be effective if at least eighty percent of our students are meeting benchmarks as based by the data.
Is there any reaction on staff that eighty percent is a reasonable benchmark to be starting with in implementing this?
For the staff, so far, the Cohort One schools, that they've had more access or more teachings on this, it's, some reaction is that it's a little, it's high, that the expectation is that, wow, that's high, given, even if you look at our data, right? If we look at the data, even if we go back to last month that was presented, we're nowhere near there. We know that.
Yeah, I mean, I reacted to the phrase "at least." You know, if we were shooting for eighty percent in the opening phases of building this, it would make more sense. At least sort of started, seemed high.
Yeah, and this is, it does, but at the same time, for us, it's a, it's a long-term plan. We know and we recognize that it's not going to happen overnight, and we do want to set a benchmark and a target for us to hit. And all the research points that, in a tiered system such as the multi-tiered systems of support, eighty percent is where you're really being faithful, you're faithful, you're holding to your fidelity measures with the practices that you put in place. And so if that indeed is true, all the research points that you should at least get 80% of your kids.
Formally or informally, is there a sense of a timeframe for getting to 80%? One year, five years, whatever?
Yeah, usually it's about five to six years for full implementation.
That makes more sense, that makes more sense to me.
Yeah, and it's because, we're saying that our response to equity, to how we're going to attain those equitable communities, and for us, we've even set the bar higher, right? We're saying that this is what we want for all our students. The equitable communities is what we want for all our students. And so when you look at realistically, putting in place not a program, not a thing, but an actual systems change, it's going to take time, and the research shows it's about five to six years.
That makes sense.
So this is a great concept, like what you mentioned earlier, a framework, which makes a lot of sense to me if we put this as, if we develop this as a concept and as a goal. I'm somewhat more literal, it helps me to actually see, to be able to understand it better. So do you have like, an example as far as what exactly would be going to do at a site so that we can reach to this goal? Like specific activities, specific programs that you thought of, things like that?
So that's part of the process, is the common assurances that we as a district have to develop, and that's part of what the tier one teams at each of the sites are developing. They're specifically looking at the culture and climate system of this framework, which means that they're currently developing the common expectations in terms of behavior for the students that they expect. And they're putting in place the system to go along with it. So it's not just, this is how we want you to behave, we're going to teach you how to behave in that way, we're going to acknowledge you when you do meet those behavior standards, we're going to hold you accountable and reteach you when you don't, and then we're going to monitor and assess based on data whether it's working or not. And so it could be though, as an example, some of our school sites have implemented PBIS, the Positive Behavior Intervention Support. So that can be a universal practice that we decide to use that is going to get us to at least 80% of the students meeting benchmark as evidenced by a decrease in referrals, a decrease in suspensions, an increase in certain indicators that we ask through the panorama survey. Do you feel more connected to schools? Do you understand the rules and regulations of the school site? And so right now, I know there's a want to hear a more specific tangible in terms of like, you know, like Avid, let's just do Avid across the board, but the big push within MTSS is that it's the process that we have to go through as a district to really be able to make this a systemic, sustainable change that will be here beyond me, beyond any of the adults in the system. And so even me, I have to be patient because you want to see like that thing, but that's, this is not it.
I mean, it's been, it's been great so far. I mean, it's a multi-tier support system, right? I mean, wonderful, but still like, you know, it's a great concept, you know? How do we get there? What do we do?
It's going to take time. It's going to take a little bit of time. And it's not to say that we're not already doing things that we can look to see and really then put measures around and say, oh, wow, at Evergreen, they're really good and the evidence shows that they're doing that, hey, that should become a common assurance across the district, not just for Evergreen. And so that's the process that we're engaging in.
So my understanding is that this is the pilot year for seven schools, the pilot year in which schools are going to come up with their own individualized plan in collaboration with the district to start figuring out what is MTSS, is that right? Sorry. Look like.
Yeah, so I'm going to caution with the word pilot, because pilot tends to be something that comes and goes. And so for us, really, we're invested in this. For us, this is the framework that we're going to slowly, and that's why it's going to be a little bit slower, that we're going to engage in, to put in place so that indeed it does bring about those systemic changes. So I understand why you want to use the word pilot, because we only are starting with seven schools that are digging deep into it. But I will show you specifically what the seven schools in a little bit are digging into, so then you have an understanding as to what that role is specifically, and then how we're going to introduce the other schools.
Can I keep my questions to the end? I'm going to try.
Okay. Okay, so moving on to tier two, the foundational elements within that, and the one word or the one takeaway that maybe if you want to highlight or start is layered, layered on tier one. So this is not, you don't get tier one anymore, it's layered into your two. And it's targeted, it's small group, it's for a smaller period of time, there's a team that determines movement or additional support, there is data that is used to be able to assess the need and to monitor the progress. And so when you look at it in the graphic, it's layered on top of the universal, so it's a plus, it's an addition. So if, if we go by the model and the structure, and we say that if tier one is going to, our benchmark is that it's successful for at least 80% of our kids, then that means that through data, what would bubble up as additional supplemental support needed would be for about 20% of our kids. So 20% of our kids would then get additional supplemental support based on their needs so that they can then improve their performance and reach benchmark. And then finally, we have tier three. Again, the keyword here is layered, it's layered on tier one and tier two, it's more intensive, it's for a longer period of time. Again, there's this creation of a team that is used to monitor data and progress and to make decisions based on that data. And so when you look at it in terms of the graphic, and you look at it, again, in the structure, if we're at faithful implementation and we're looking at 80% success with our tier one, 20% for our tier two, this would only be for about 5% of our students, that through data, it has been determined that they need additional support, doesn't mean that they do no longer get the universal access supports or practices, they're still a part of that, they get the supplemental support, plus they get intensive individual instruction. And again, it's based on data. So that's a little bit of the learning in terms of the specifics of the structure and the framework. I want to bring you back then to, I know some of you had the questions on specifically, okay, so what does it mean? So great, this is a framework, this is a structure, what's the work, what's the implementation for us as a district? So again, I bring you back to, we have currently, in this initial year of work that we're engaging in, there's three working groups, a district leadership team, an MTSS work group, and the Cohort One Schools tier one teams. And specifically, again, just to point to the picture, the district leadership team is really looking at it from a balcony view, looking at, okay, how close are we getting to meeting those equitable communities? The MTSS work group is really looking at the details, the notes and bolt, specific to how are we defining tier one, what are the interventions that we're going to invest in, what are those common assurances and practices that we're going to invest, what are the diagnostic tools, what are the assessments that are going to be used in order to determine the movement or the addition of support within the tiers? And specifically, Cohort One schools are working on the system of climate and culture because it's directly correlated with our implementation and rollout of our uniform behavior response matrix. And because we've introduced this new idea of how we responded adults to teenage behavior, it's directly correlated, and it made sense for us to focus at the school sites on the climate and culture, given that we were introducing a new behavior matrix at our school sites with different expectations of how we were hoping our advisors and our teachers interacted with students when it came to the behaviors that our teenagers distribute and how we as adults positively respond to that.
Teresa, is the leadership team basically members made up from ed services, from your division?
Dr. Rubio is part of that, as well as Clacell, our director of equity, and then we have our union representation there as well, both are union presidents.
Okay, and then the MTSS work group, is that a combination of members from each of the Cohort One schools as well as the leadership team?
Correct.
I was wondering that, does MTSS impact our budget because there's a time of staff as well as administrator will be involved in this process?
Yes, absolutely, it does. At one of our board meetings, we, you, not we, you as a board approved a contract to work with Collaborative Learning Solutions to help us in this work. And it's a four-year contract that we've engaged with. But even beyond that, because MTSS is going to become the structure and the framework for us to attain equitable communities, part of what we're going to have to look at is how do we align our resources? And resources include both funding as well as staffing, to be able to really focus on whatever common assurances, those common practices that we're going to say we're going to invest in across the district. And so there, it will have an impact.
And what you mentioned, that the project will probably will be implemented or will be working on pretty much from the timeline about six to seven years, but the budget that we want to work on, we're going to have to oversee, you know, the process as well as the timeline of, you know, the project, you know, correlate with our budget, correct?
Yes, and so again, I know I'm going to be picky on words, it's not a project that we're engaging in, this is what we're hoping to become with Eastside. This is what we're hoping to say, in Eastside Union High School District, we are working to attain equitable communities, and we are doing it by offering students the instruction and interventions that they need through a multi-tiered system of support that will allow them to feel a sense of belonging and succeed at each of the schools regardless of what school they go to.
So this is not just a nerd initiative, another flavor of the month or the year?
Nope.
This is a way of being?
Yes, this is what we're hoping becomes our way of being, our identity as Eastside Union High School District. And even if you look at our core values, our vision, our mission, our core values, it is directly in alignment, the framework, with that. And because that was the approach that our partners at Collaborative Learning Solutions came, that's why we partnered with them. They had the most comprehensive systemic approach that would allow us to attain the goals that we as a district wanted to attain, and we knew that it was something that was not going to be just another initiative.
When do you think that we're going to start this MTSS, this fiscal year? Or this is a plan that we will have to review it and implement in our budget for, you know, two years or four years?
So we've started. So this has been work that we've already begun. And I think if this is who we're going to become as a district, then our budgetary decisions are going to have to be based off of that. And so it can't be the other ways, like how does this fit into our budget? No, it's, this is how we do business in Eastside, so how do we align our resources and our budget to ensure that this is happening? So getting a little bit more down to the notes and bolt, when I talked about the MTSS work group at the district level, the key elements and the high-leverage elements that they're working on are on foundations and definitions, meaning that they're looking at, how do we as a district define MTSS? What are the interventions that we're going to put in place? What is the instruction going to look like that we're going to say, again, this is what's going to get us to the equitable communities? We also are looking to define those decision coupons based on data for that movement of those students. Another element is the teaming. We're looking at what are our current teaming structures and how do we need to shift them, if they need to be shifted, to really be able to have success within the framework when it comes to making those decisions of what are those common assurances, and how do we then measure fidelity to those common assurance so that we can then align our resources? And what's the data and assessments that we're going to be able to use to be able to make those decisions? And so currently, at the Cohort One schools, what they're working on is the tier one team. Some of the sites have decided to use their instructional leadership teams for their department chairs, others have decided to use their school and climate PBIS team to be able to take on this work. Yes?
So you have used the term "common assurances" several times, and I still don't get it.
So a common assurance is something like a common practice that we as a district are going to say, we do this across the board for all our kids at all our sites, we build professional development around it, we invest money into that particular thing. And so for an example, it could be instructionally, we could say academic discourse, right? So students need to be talking about how to be a mathematician, the language around being a mathematician, the language around being a literary critic. So there are some common elements within academic discourse that aren't content-specific that we would train around, that we would put funding into, that we would measure, that we would expect when you walked into the classroom, you would see it across the board, that then we could measure if it in true is giving us the student outcomes that we want to see. So that's what I mean by a common assurance.
So would a similar phrase be like standard practices?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, just so that I understand, because I also had a little sense of ambiguity about that phrase.
Yeah, a standard practice, a common practice. I like the word "common assurance" only because there's a sense of accountability that comes with that, that also then speaks to that it's, it's for all students, right? We currently can say we have some common practices, but what are the measures around them? So for me, the word "common assurance" gives it the extra element of the accountability piece that comes with some sort of fidelity measure.
Yeah, I like it, because it does, you know, now when you break it down like that, "common" meaning it's everywhere, and "assurance" meaning that's the accountability, right? We're guaranteeing this is everywhere. And I just think that it's important, you know, being still a relatively new board member and knowing that we have actually a new board member, and we have student board members, that as we roll out the work, I think it's really important that we also let people know what do we mean by this.
Yes, and I'm so glad you said that, because the first bullet and what we're currently working on are the foundations and definitions, because we know that if I say, even if I say academic discourse right now, I could tell you that if you ask any one of my colleagues behind me, they'd give you a different definition of what that is. And so a common assurance ensures that we have the same understanding and definition of what it is and how we're going to measure it. And that it's aligned to our graduate profile, that's a big thing, a key piece for us. I know this is a lot, so thank you for hanging in there with me. The next element in terms of implementation is at the site level. So our site-level teams are not just being kind of released to do, do it on their own, they're receiving coaching. So part of the support is that, as a team, they're getting coaching to be able to really look at, what's the teaming system that we have at our sites? What's the communication and commitment piece that we have to ensure that we have in place? What are those common expectations for students, for us as adults? How are we going to teach those expectations? How are we going to acknowledge them? How are we going to hold them accountable to those expectations? And how are we going to assess whether what we've put in place is working or not? And so this is specific to the climate piece that I spoke to you about, that the tier one teams at the Cohort One schools are working on, and these are each of the elements that they're building their common assurances around, which is those common expectations of behavior, but not just, here's the expectation, you're going to have pride or responsibility in what you do, but what does that mean? What does it mean for me as a student, and how am I going to be taught that particular expectation? And if I do it, how am I going to be acknowledged? And if I don't, what's the accountability piece? And how am I going to then get allowed an opportunity to relearn that expectation? And of course, we know that this cannot work if there is not any professional learning around it. Specifically already, I can tell you that our tier one teams have been trained, they've participated in a two-day intensive training around the main components of multi-tiered systems of support, and also in just even being able to understand who's on my team and how do I work with the people within my team. We're planning MTSS Integrated Systems Training for those champions at each of the schools that are going to take the lead and become part of those tier two and tier three teams. And obviously, you know, and I've spoken to the implicit bias training, which is a key component of this work. Specifically, some of the main topics that we're looking to include within those trainings and for future trainings is around restorative practices, social-emotional learning, trauma-informed practices, and I should say positive behavior responses. I left out that responses word. And then data, right? The thing that excites me as a former math teacher is that this is really grounded in data. And we know that the various areas of data are in the screening, how do we screen? How do we screen for what those specific needs are? How do we in the classroom put in place our formative assessments to right there and there know that the kid's not getting it and that then I need to intervene right there and there? Diagnostic, what is it that the kid does already know and maybe needs to know? Where are the gaps? And then the fidelity measures that I spoke to. A big thing about MTSS is that we should not be moving groups of kids to Tier Two or Tier Three if there are gaps in the fidelity of the common assurances in Tier One. Because that tells me that the common assurance we put in place, if we're not doing it to fidelity, then the data should surface that it's that's the issue, not the kid. The kid doesn't need additional support. We need to figure out what's happening with our universal practices at Tier One. We also know that there's going to be that data intersection of school climate and academic data. And you've seen it last month, Kristen presented to you, and actually Kenya's presented it to you in previous meetings, the results of the Panorama Survey. You've been able to see our suspension rates. You've been able to see our expulsion rates, our office referrals, the disproportionality that exists, and how then that correlates with some of our academic data that Kristen presented to you last month. And then finally, a big piece of it is really actually professional learning around the protocols for that continuous monitoring and analysis of data as it relates to student outcomes in our Tier One systems. And really, one of the big takeaways that I hope that you're able to go home with after this presentation is Tier One is really the bread and butter. The bread and butter of the work. We really have to ensure that as a system, we've put in place the universal access, that Tier One foundations that we spoke about, because that's really where we're gonna get all our students. We actually already have in place quite a bit of interventions outside Tier One, where we send kids outside of us because we don't have those practices within the classroom to address them. So we refer them to special ed or we ask them to go to a homework center outside of my math classroom. So this is really about what are the changes that need to happen within the classroom so that I can intervene right there and there.
It also sounds like a student could move between, in between those three different tiers at any given time.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm excited. Sorry, you got me excited when you said that, because that's checking for understanding. You got it, absolutely.
That's what he's saying, right?
Yes, you're absolutely right. It is definitely a fluid system. Perfect, thank you. He's on it, he's on it. So we know that this can't happen without a support plan. And so we understand that there has to be capacity built both at the district level and at the school site level. And we cannot work in silos or in isolation of each other. And so hopefully, you've been able to hear that there's this partnership between representation at our various work groups from both the district and the site in these work groups. And I also want to mention that we've also included our Californians for Justice within the MTSS work group to allow for that student voice and for their expertise that they bring when it comes to promoting student voice into this piece of it. And so you could see that when it comes to district capacity, we too are getting coaching in the sense of professional learning from our partners. We're hoping to be able to look at a review and revision of policies. We're hoping to be able to develop brain guidelines for MTSS, kind of like a handbook that exists beyond me, beyond anyone. Professional learning, refining our data systems, looking at our work groups, and then obviously looking at some consultation around our disproportionality in special ed. At the school site, they're receiving coaching sessions. There's work around the site teams to establish those structures specific to the climate and culture. They're gonna be conducting those fidelity assessments as they plan and then obviously develop the systems for collection of data and monitoring when it comes to school climate indicators. And we have a lot of this in place. We have the Panorama surveys. We have the shape data that, excuse me, that I believe Glenn shared with you at one of the previous board sessions. So we have those things in place. It's just a matter of now, how do we actually organize them and unify them to the point of MTSS to where we can really then use the data? I'm almost done. And so when you look specifically at the Tier One, I mentioned that that's really kind of our bread and butter or the key aspect, at least for me, when it comes to MTSS. And specifically, when you look at the system of culture and climate, what the role of that team is at the site is to be able to look at implementation of behavior and social support where the expectations are clearly defined. Expectations are taught, they're acknowledged, they're corrected. There's a system for correction. It's not just, you did it, you didn't meet it, and now I leave you to your own devices. And they're based on data. We're responsible for the monitoring of the health and wellness of the school. They kind of take a pulse check, so to speak, of the climate of the school. They facilitate problem-solving or action planning at the school site. We ensure that teachers are supported. We're not just gonna throw them out there and say, here's what you do. But there's gonna be some support around that. And there is fidelity and sustainability of school-wide systems, right? So again, those fidelity measures to be able to attain that sustainability. I'm not sure. I think somebody asked about the Tier One team. The process that the principals engaged in was they were asked, who will be on your climate team? What's the strength, capacity, or perspective of each of these persons? Specifically, have you looked at members from various areas across your school site? Are there different roles represented? And are there any primary decision-makers on the team that will allow you to be able to move forward? And so principals engaged in this process to be able to really determine the makeup of their Tier One team at each of their sites. And the commitments that the Tier One teams have made is that they're going to really truly look at establishing a theory of action, that various representatives from different stakeholders are represented, that they have a calendar for scheduling their meetings, that they're getting coaching around the utilization of effective procedures that include like, what's my role? What's my responsibility? What's the follow-up? They were trained in a problem-solving protocol. They were partners at Collaborative Learning Solutions that they're continuing to get coaching at their sites. We're really pushing the use of data to inform decision-making processes. And as a matter of fact, one of the kind of refining or defining that we did with our principals' meetings is that Glenn has invested time in actually going out to the sites and doing site meetings with the site admin to begin to look at data using the problem-solving protocol. He's gone to, I believe, six? Okay, they'll happen every six weeks. And so they'll look at data and be able to use those protocols that they're being coached around to be able to then turn around and do this with their staff.
What's a theory of action?
So a theory of action is if we engage in, you know, this practice, then this will happen. We expect this to happen. So if we put in place common expectations for behavior for all our students, then our Panorama survey data will reflect a higher number of students reporting that they feel connected to the school. So that would be an example of a theory of action. And then finally, as I close, as I begin to close the presentation and the learning, I did wanna point out too, again, in case you're still wondering, well, what's the connection? You know, are we gonna leave something out? What's missing? This is very much in alignment and connection with the ALCAP. We know that through the ALCAP, we have to put in place conditions of learning. There has to be this element of student engagement that is grounded within people outcomes. And so you could see that there's direct correlation in terms of what the ALCAP demands of us, what we're expected to do, and what MTSS can do for us when we've implemented it as a system within our district. And I wanna close just kind of with a few slides to recognize that I've given you about thirty-plus slides of a lot of technical information. But I recognize that there, in order for us to establish equitable communities, there is indeed this emotional or adaptive aspect that comes when you're introducing or when you're gonna engage in something that is so different and systemic, such as MTSS. You know, you've heard me say, this is what we hope, we say, this is what Eastside does. And so we're not, those of us who are deep in the planning are not leaving behind the fact that we know that with technical change does come a lot of adaptive work that has to happen. And we recognize that change is something that happens fast. We're not changing. We're transitioning, which will allow us to be able to then go through the emotions that will hopefully allow us to get to a new beginning where we're redefined as a district and this becomes our identity. So I do wanna put that out there that we recognize that there is some adaptive work that has to happen. And because we recognize that, the lens that I'm asking all my people and I'm asking the board to take is really to then also begin to find that connection to you within your role. And to then really begin to ask the question of what are the necessary shifts in mindset and culture that will have to happen for the successful implementation of MTSS? And so specifically, there may have to be a cultural shift in the shared responsibility and collaboration between general ed and special ed, right? So there's maybe a myth out there or misconception that MTSS is a special ed function. It is not a special ed function. And so there's a shift in that culture and mindset that will have to happen for us to be able to have successful implementation. And really, it's to the end of allowing ourselves to have a common narrative, unified narrative, that will allow us to have responses that are both aligned and that support our work. And I just kind of give you this as examples in terms of your thinking as you're beginning to own and understand what MTSS is and why we're engaging in this work. So we may get questions at the district as to, why are we expecting staff to participate in implicit bias professional development? We may get questions around our UBR. If our district work is about equity, how does the uniform behavior response matrix fit into that work? And you may even get questions because I know that Mr. Vander presented to you some data and Kristen presented to you data that showed a great disproportionality and gaps in data that you may be asked, well, hey, I keep hearing about disproportionality and how certain ethnic groups are disproportionate when it comes to this or that. But if my school is mainly made up of Hispanic students, for example, that's who's gonna get the referral. So what's the issue, right? And so for me, I offer this as your response or as our response as a district. It's about establishing equitable Eastside communities. So why are we expecting staff to participate in implicit bias professional development? Because we know that we all have biases. And intrapersonally, I need to make sure that I'm aware of those and that I know the impact so that then I can welcome our students as they are. If our work as a district is about equity, how does the uniform behavior response fit into that work? Well, I need to make sure that I, as an adult, can positively respond to the social-emotional wellness and academic needs of every student. I need to be able to do that. And I know that when we have consistent practices across the board, especially when it comes to behavior that contributes to our school climate, that's gonna be able to happen. Oops. And then finally, around disproportionality. We have the data that tells us that we have gaps when it comes to academic performance and that there's disproportionality in terms of suspension rates and office referrals. And what's the issue? If that becomes a question, well, it's this, that if we are to narrow the achievement gap or even eliminate it, if that's ever possible, it's gonna have to happen when we are able to provide those universal common assurances across to all our students. And when there is a mindset that, yes, we welcome our students as they are, but we don't keep them there. We recognize that there are strengths and areas of growth that need to be supported. We respond positively and appropriately to those needs that then will allow them to produce at higher levels so that they can be those scientists, mathematicians, historians, and literary critics.
So... It's a great presentation, but then I think what the last slide sort of a little, create a little bit, a little concern for you because I see this, what you present so far, as far as, you know, the multi-support system, support. And it talks a lot, it talks, or just describe a lot more than just the culture and the climate. There's an academic piece to it and there's data-driven and how you make decisions, how you support the student. But then if we just base, I mean, if all the work is just based on, we are based on the notion that to do all this stuff, we require all the staff and everybody in the workforce to attend the implicit impact training. I felt that that is limited. Because implicit bias training is important, but it's not, it shouldn't be the one that driving this so-called, the new way of doing this. Exactly. So that conclusion in the end sort of struck me, so, okay, well, is this, is this, is this all this work? Is it all, is it based on, you know, so?
So let me be a little bit clearer. So this piece was just because as board members, I feel that there needs to be a deeper understanding as to what we're doing as a district, the why, and then how you're gonna respond to that. So that when we engage in the work, then we're able to cohesively engage in the work and that there's a common message. So these were just examples of potential questions or emails that you may get specific to items that, you're right, don't really speak to what the entirety of MTSS is. Implicit bias training is that one piece that we chose to begin with because we knew that that was a way to be able to, one, get a shared understanding around language, and two, start with that interpersonal piece that if we as the adults in the system cannot be reflective and cannot see our role and our impact of the work that we do as individuals, it's gonna be very hard to move into the inter and then move into the systemic or structural changes. And so this was only brought to you as kind of your, one of your takeaways that when I asked you to look at it through the lens of what's your connection to the work and what's your messaging, that you may get them in the form of these questions from staff. So how then do you respond with the overarching lens of MTSS and equitable communities? So that's what the intent of this was.
Just in addition to that, I think it's a natural example because when you look at the five-hundred-and-some staff members that have already gone through the implicit bias training, I would say ninety-eight percent of them are true believers. Second semester, as it gets to be a little bit more crunch time and the pressure's on them to attend, they're the ones that may start asking the questions, sending the email. They're trying to prep you and give you some language you can use for that time. Because it will come. There's no question it will come. Because we'll have staff members that will not want to participate in implicit bias training.
Go ahead.
I was wondering that, do we have, when we talk about framework and you lay out a lot of information, I know it's within, you know, forty-five minutes or thirty minutes. We might not absorb all of this information. But I think it's something that was clicking in my mind that when we talk about disproportionality or all of those suggestions or implementation that we have right now in Eastside, how are we gonna measure it? The measure, the accomplishment, the success for of, you know, this MTSS? The timeframe that we're looking to, two years from now? When you set the goal, maybe eighty percent of the goal that will be accomplished, are we gonna achieve it? Are we gonna look into another year, whatever the reason will be interrupt, you know, our goals? And I was wondering about, we talk a lot about climate, but not really consider to understand the culture, the culture of each student. Each student, you know, come from different backgrounds, different religion, different culture? Then we really have the cultural awareness, understanding, the deep root, why, you know, how that the student reacted, vice versa, another student will have happened the same situation? So still got a lot of thought in my mind that we probably were not gonna really put down, you know, in this situation right now. But I really want to see that. But I really want to see that if, in a year from now or two years from now, what have we accomplished? What have we really gone through with MTSS? And how many percentages of student, teachers, staff have been involved and really succeed? Help the goal, maybe achieve it? And if we would not achieve in two years, three years, four years, and what is our next step?
So again, it's a process to get to, but to the first point of your question around the measures, that's part of the work that we're gonna engage in, is developing those fidelity measures to really assess whether whatever it is that we put in place is giving us the outcomes that we want. But I also don't want you to think that we're leaving, and that's why I showed you the, this slide. We have key performance measures. That continues to be data for us. Those continue to be measures that we can use. Because what we're seeing is that this systemic approach of MTSS, as you saw in one of the earlier slides, is going to produce, as research has shown, a decrease in suspension, which is one of our key performance measures, an increase in graduation rate, which is one of our key performance measures. So we have already existing measures that we'll continue to use. So you'll continue to see Kristen come forth and bring you the data on the key performance measures as well as academic success. And so those will be some just inherent measures that we already have because of the LCAP piece and the accountability that we, as a district, have to the state and to the federal government. In addition to that, though, we need those more timely measures that we will be able to use and assess to determine whether those common assurances that we've put in place are actually being successful at the tier-one level for at least 80% of our students.
Yeah, I think that's something that we can look forward to see that. And also, another note that I was just curious that, how did you choose the seven schools as cohort tier? First one.
So we looked at schools that had principals or site administrations that were not as new in some. So we knew that there was gonna be a, maybe a possibly a higher learning curve or some adapting that would have to be made for those. We also looked at where there was things already in place such as PBIS. So that's what you see, schools like Evergreen and Mount Pleasant and Oak Grove being in cohort one. And then just where we saw that there may be a greater need to start a little bit sooner. And it's not to say that the other schools aren't doing anything. At our principals' meetings, at our cabinet meetings, they've received this, this very similar presentation. And they're also knowing that this is coming and they're beginning to put in place elements within the MTSS framework to allow for the transition to happen when it comes for them next year.
And then also I did mention earlier that this will be impact and timeframe from administrator, teachers, and staff, right? How are we gonna manage this? I mean, I know that beside the budget, but still, you know, we don't have enough time. The principal has a lot of responsibility as well, almost administrator. So I was wondering, if we implement what we have right now, is that gonna be another big impact on our teachers, staff, administrator?
It will be. This is a lot of work. I'm not gonna pretend to stand up here and say that it's easy work. But also it's gonna have, it's looking at a redefining of roles. And if we're currently focusing on this, but this is not producing the outcomes that we want, then we don't do that anymore. We put this in place, which then leaves you open in terms of time to be able to then do this. The, for me, the big piece of MTSS is also the opportunity for us to look at what is currently in place, what are the outcomes that are being produced, what is currently in place? And if it's something that is producing outcomes, then that becomes a common assurance for us across the board. So it could be something that at these sites, well, that's already happening. I already have the time and the protocols for that. Now how does that then become something that is systemic across our district? Not just something that happens at Mount Pleasant because it's Mount Pleasant or at Evergreen because it's Evergreen.
Thank you.
And just, I keep interrupting you, Mad President. Are you sure? Just as a reminder to the board that when we presented this to the board and the board did approve the MTSS framework, it's a four-year, $1.2 million implementation. So cohort one gets two years of coaching. Cohort two gets two years of coaching. And that fourth year is kind of to make sure we're all on board, that the district staff is aligned with the school sites. Because after that four years, then it should become systemic and we should be able to determine what those common assurances will be. What's working and what's not? What can we take off people's plate? Because this is now gonna be the district-wide assurance. And that means looking at everything from, is added a common assurance that we wanna see across the district? Is project-based learning something we wanna see across the district? Is how counselors interact with students, common assurance across the district? And do we change how they interact with students? Is international backglow, it's something that is a common assurance? Though, this will be an opportunity through the MTSS framework to look at best practices and determine what's working well and the data to support it and what we need to give up because the data doesn't support it. That's why it's gonna take some time to actually reach the actual goals we wanna reach.
No, I mean, sorry to interrupt you again.
I have my last word and don't worry.
Okay. This presentation, it would have been a lot more helpful to me to be able to see the timeline. When did we start implementing this? How many phases? You know, like, did we start, did we start already? Was it last year or is it this year? What's gonna happen next year, the years of that? It would be very, it'd be more helpful. And also, I mean, you probably introduced this before, but I might have just completely forgotten about it. But to me, this is like the first time I'm seeing this. I might, we might have approved this already without knowing the full impact or understand the whole concept of it until this evening. So, so having said all that, I'm curious, if we already implemented it, what was the, the response from the teachers and so on? Because they were, they are the one who, who are directly, even having to implement or impacted by it.
So the board approved the contract last August. So...
So it's been a while.
No, it's only been six months.
Oh, six months, okay.
Yeah, so the board approved it in August. We geared up, preparing for it. And then the cohort one schools, I would say, started in end of September.
September.
Yeah. And of course, the implicit bias started immediately. So we're only six months in.
What's our source of funding that you referred to, a million and something you said?
The LCAP, LCAP, supplemental funds.
And so also too, it's at the level, I wanna bring you back to the implementation, where we're at the working group level. So if a teacher hasn't necessarily been specifically impacted by it other than the participation through the implicit bias training, because it's not at that level yet. It's at the planning stages at the moment in terms of those teamings to be able to get to the common assurances. When we get to that point, that's where then the teachers are gonna start to, to get deeper involved directly in terms of the impact to their classroom. When we presented the contract in August, we did frame it specifically, because I took some of the slides from here, with that understanding that the structure we were engaged in and the reasoning for having gone with collaborative learning solutions because of their comprehensive approach and use of multi-tiered systems of support. And I believe that in connection with some of the SHAPE data that Glenn presented at one of the study sessions, he also introduced the idea of that SHAPE was part of this process in terms of looking at the data through the multi-tiered systems of support lens.
And just to remind the board, SHAPE is the software?
Yes, the software that we've partnered with Collaborative Learning was to look specifically at office referrals and allows us to be able to really dig deep into a lot of different intersection points for that specific office referral, for a student, school-wide, and with patterns, looking at, being able to look at patterns.
Specifically measuring disproportionality and things like that.
Correct, yes, correct.
When you talk about this system is data-driven, you can use something like that, not only to look at trends, but also specifically who are those students that are repeatedly having, you know, these kind of, that are in need of intervention?
Yes, absolutely.
Because they have so many touchpoints already.
Absolutely.
Right.
As well as our existing systems of illuminate and our panorama survey data as well.
So this has been an excellent presentation, thank you. And I know we spent a lot of time in it, but honestly, if we spent twice this time or three times this time, it would be worth every minute, right? That, this is that important. I totally get that. So on, when you talk about the uniform behavior response matrix, so my, what I'm, my interpretation of that is that we would literally create a matrix so if a student, you know, touches at a teacher in a classroom, this will be the response that that elicits. Is that what that is? Is that what a uniform?
It's along those lines, but it's a little bit more general. We can't get as specific as that, but it basically delineates the minor behavior actions of a student with the major ones that are, you know, we have to expel or we have to suspend. It does that, but it does include possible interventions for students should these behavior, it takes them through, you know, what happens if it's the first time? And I just do wanna add that as we look to the work around MTSS, a big piece of it is that climate and culture. And so one of the shifts that we're doing is already is the role of our advisors in how they're rolling out the uniform behavior response. They themselves are the professional developers, so to speak, of this particular piece. They're owning it, they're going back to their site, they're consistent through a common training module, sharing the information on the uniform behavior response metric to their teachers with strategies to use, with required shifts that are gonna be needed with the implementation of the UBR. And so we're, what the MTSS approach is allowing us also to do is to, one of the points is that unification of those practices and being able to work together with student services and with various departments to be able to ensure that it's all connected and aligned to, to the work that we're hoping to do. Ultimately, that of establishing equitable Eastside communities. And so that's how the UBR piece fits into this work as well.
So, so basically it's saying that if a student elicits this behavior, this is how the adults will respond?
Yes.
Okay, and so when I go back to this slide that you posted about transitions, I kinda wanna see if we have a multi-tiered system of support for the adults in this process too? And I don't, I'm not being facetious. I'm really, I mean, we're all lifelong learners, right? We're gonna, people are gonna take this on and we're not gonna do it perfectly, right? So what happens? How do we support the adults in the system as they're going through this?
Yeah, so I think, and that's why it's, it's the technical changes that will require that adaptive work. So it's professional learning, right? It's looking at, once we've established those common assurances, giving teachers an opportunity to voice and be a part of that. And so even when you look at our, at our working groups, there is teacher voice involved in that. Through Californians for Justice, they're helping us in being able to bring about the voice of the student. And so we're conscious of the importance of that. And so as we're building this, we're very strategic and intentional of the folks that are involved even in this initial stages of the work and that there is a representation of the various roles. And you saw one of the slides even at the site-level team, the determination of who was on the team. There was key questions. What's their perspective? What's their capacity? Because you do not want everybody with the same capacity, everybody with the same perspective. You wanna be able to have varying capacities, varying perspectives to be able to really then come together.
And can we also look at restorative practices for adults? So like if I'm dealing with denial, shock, anger, frustration, ambivalence, skepticism, and, by the way, my husband just left me last night and, you know, I got a flat tire on the way to work this morning, are there restorative practices or interventions that we can use with the adults if they don't do this perfectly?
So the beauty of this too is that this is really allowing us to align our practices and the things we have in place. So Melissa Wheeler, who is a teacher on special assignment, does all of that. That's her key role. She's looking at mindfulness, she's looking at self-care workshops. She does the social, emotional, not only for the teachers to learn them within the scope of the classroom, but for themselves. So we've added the number of self-care workshops during, you know, the job hours for staff, both certificated and classified, to be able to participate in. And so that's the beauty that where before we had somewhat like initiatives like, hey, that's wonderful. We have mindfulness, we have the self-care. Oh, my goodness, this is incorrect, direct correlation and alignment with how we're gonna be able to support the capacity of adults to be able to really engage in this. Because then it truly becomes, this is how we do business in Eastside.
So the mindfulness and the, and the self-care is sort of like the tier-one for adults?
Absolutely.
Do all staff are required to take the explicit bias learning session?
Yes, that's what we're moving towards. So our initial kind of messaging was, hey, we encourage you, we want to. And to the superintendent's point, he said that currently the 587 folks that have gone through it, through these 11 sessions, have probably been those that are like, hey, I'm gonna, oh, I want to. And I think our feedback, feedback forms speak to that because we do have evaluation forms. And for the most part, they've been at above 80% in terms of strongly agree with all the elements and it was positive. We'll start to see what happens with those feedback forms during this semester as we start to push a little bit more in terms of the expectation that everyone goes through the implicit bias learning.
I know I'm gonna take tomorrow anyway, but I was wondering that the timeframe is eight to three. I don't know that, is that gonna be impact into, you know, teacher or staff, you know, workload? You know, so I don't know, like maybe it will be, you know, half-day or something like that.
It's really hard to do a half-day as it is. This is an abbreviated version. Most equity or implicit bias learning sessions take up to two to three days. So this is already an abbreviated version of that learning. Because it's not also, it's, the difficulty of even doing professional learning in this manner is that studies show that the one-shot kind of deal tends to have less success than if it's followed up with coaching. And so that's why it's important for us to be able to ensure that this multi-tiered system of support then offers the additional professional learning that will take what they've learned in terms of, again, their person, the intra-piece, to then the inter, to then the systemic. And so that's why we started with the implicit bias because we needed folks to be able to understand within themselves, their own role, how to be more reflective and how to understand the biases that we all bring to the table and how that impacts the work.
And finding substitutes are hard enough. Finding a substitute for half a day makes no sense. And that's even more work for the teacher to actually prepare for half a day sub and then go back and you teach your regular classes. Those kids will not receive the same instruction that day, so.
And I've worked very closely with HR to ensure that we have, that's why we said it at the number that we set it, to ensure that we had enough sub-coverage. We've worked with principals to ensure that no more than eight to 10 folks from each of their site are, that who require a sub, are signed up for any one session so that there's not an overburden of not having teachers in the classroom.
So where did this MTSS model come from that we're using and adapting?
I don't know its original origins, but it's a push statewide as well as being pushed nationwide as well.
Statewide, it's coming out of the State Department of Education?
State Department of Education as an inclusive practice.
I, I'm appreciating the systemic approach, the substantive approach, the alignment, the integration, its global strategic audacity, you know, I like all that because I'm a systems thinker. You know, I do have a part of me that is looking, sensing for, the closer it gets to ground level where, you know, where the interactions are occurring, the more these kinds of integrated models start to not kind of hold their, you know, their integrity in its framework of thinking. And I've actually been in organizations where this kind of, you know, pretty thoughtful and even brilliant kind of planning has destabilized an organization because of on-the-ground realities that don't match such logical, integrated thinking, you know? So I'm curious as to if I were to be out there and talking to people, principals, staff, certificated and classified and, you know, what have you, what would I begin to hear on the, you were showing the arc for slow transition, what would I hear on the skepticism side? And you started to offer some of that and offered the board a framework for responses and the superintendent referred to a survey, I think, or something that you said indicated a 98% embrace, you know, of this early stage, but we haven't gotten to the nuts and bolts, you know? but we haven't gotten to the nuts and bolts, you know, and what have you. So all, all I'm saying as a policymaker is I really appreciate this work to systematize, you know, and to anchor and integrate. And, you know, I do get concerned about expectations for actually achieving a level of systemic integration. And so, you know, the, the disconnects when we start to land this are, in my experience, part of the accomplishment. They're not a deviation from the accomplishment, they're part of what's to be expected when you're actually on the ground finally, you know. And, okay, and the other comment I want to make is, it would be great to have a community-oriented, less jargon-driven version of this, because this is very educator-intensive with its language, you know. And, and yet, you know, the apparent could understand some of the bottom lines if it had a different language, you know, and community people could understand it a lot better if we did as much as we could to strip the jargon and simplify the integrated links we're envisioning and on and on, you know. And finally, part of, just as a systemic thinker is, you know, as I've been listening tonight, is that, that whole 20%, 80% rule, that 20% of your effort generates 80% of your results. And, you know, here we've got this, like I said, global strategic, all-encompassing approach, you know. And yet, what tends to be true is 20% of your effort generates 80% of your results. And if that has any validity, validity or applicability in what we're attempting to do, where is that 20% of this 100% approach? It's just conceptual system thinking is, you know, what comes for me. That's it, I really appreciate the work.
Thank you. Yeah, and of course, this, this is absolutely educational jargon. For our parents, it's this, this is, I think, the language we've developed for, for our parents in our community as well as our graduate profile. So, yeah, so I think we have a version that is very similar now to our graduate profile. If you recall the, the format, that we're going to begin to roll out to our community in terms of this is really what we want for your child. We want to establish Eastside Equitable Communities and this is what we mean by that. And in terms of the actual MTSS, they may not need to know those pieces. They just need to know that this is, in terms of the actual MTSS jargon that, that you, that you spoke to, they don't necessarily need to know as much detail as you have received today. It's more about what's the support, what's the instructions? What's the supports and intervention that my child's getting to succeed?
Yeah, I'd love to be, as a policymaker, as an elected official, I'd love to be equipped with a more community, user-friendly version.
Yep, but we're definitely gonna work on that.
One last thing is that I've heard this phrase before, "All students are provided tasks that demand production through and beyond DOK3, so that they can communicate like a scientist, mathematician, historian, artist, literary critic, and more." And a part of me backs up when I see that and I say, what do we really mean here? Literally that every student we're looking for to communicate like each of those things? Or some of those things, you know, because not everybody's gonna communicate like a scientist, mathematician, historian, artist, literary critic? And I start to think like, well, now we're flying a little high in the clouds with our conceptual strategic thinking and what is the intention of that phrase?
So the intention is specific to our graduate profile, is that they can communicate, problem solve, collaborate, create, be productive members of community and that they're powered with a plan, just like a scientist would, a mathematician. So in my biology class, I have enough of the academic language to be able to communicate, present my own ideas, I can problem solve within that setting using the language of a scientist. So we don't mean to say that they're gonna sound like a bunch of Albert Einsteins, but that they're actually gonna be able to use the academic language to be able to communicate and have that academic discussion.
That's clear to me, and I may be misreading the way it's phrased, but I, you know, for me, for example, I, I'm a lot better communicator as a historian than a mathematician, you know, or a scientist, and I'm better as a literary critic than, you know, an artist. And, but when I'm told, oh, I'm supposed to measure up the scientist, mathematician, historian, artist, that phrase starts to overwhelm me and I start to like discount, it's a thread of starting to discount the bigger model, the bigger picture, you know. So I, I, maybe we want to revisit or tweak that sentence so that it doesn't.
Remember, Charles?
This is an amazing presentation. A lot of work went into it.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you. So this discussion has been helpful in just digesting the concept and how Eastside is thinking about it. I, I appreciate the, the thought behind having a systemic comprehensive approach, because as we were going through this, I was like, these are a lot of things that happen in schools already, right? They look different, some schools do it better than others. But I, I get like the importance of having the systemic comprehensive approach so that when we talk about how is it that we operate in Eastside, we could all easily, so like, we do X, Y, and Z and it's all under MTSS, right? So all in one bucket or framework, if you will. Chris, when you mentioned that this is like a four-year, we have a four-year timeline, that was super helpful, because like going through my mind was like, okay, we have these seven schools, how are we thinking about the rest? I think that would be helpful to see an actual timeline. When we were talking about implicit bias, it sounds like that is a key training and, and support development. It sounds like there's some sort of timeline also that we're thinking about in terms for all of our staff to get that. I'm curious to see what the support looks after that training, to keep engaging on implicit bias to support this work. So I'm sorry, I'm just spilling out like what's top of mind for me. And when we think about MTSS and I hear systems, comprehensive approach, I can't help but to think, this is how we're thinking about things and creating a system as adults. But then I go back to, why are we doing this? And we go back to equitable Eastside communities. And when we talk about specifically, I love that I see students in almost every single bullet point, but when we talk about it, I, I don't hear that orientation necessarily from the lens or the voice of the student. So I'm really curious to, to hear and to even engage with folks at different layers. Like how are, when we're thinking about this work, how are we thinking about that? How are we thinking about that lens, especially when we're creating systems? Because I think there's a huge opportunity when we're about to, you know, do something big and formalize it to be like, it's from the student lens. It's not necessarily from the district level or to systemize, systemize things for the sake of systemizing things. It's because it's what the students need.
Yeah, and, and I think the work is being done currently at the district level with site input and at the site level. But the lens is totally from student outcomes, because that's how MTSS is framed. If you look at the slide, that speaks to why MTSS. It's all based on student outcomes that are directly correlated and aligned to our key performance measures, right? So when you look at it from that lens, that truly is the lens. And at a later point, when we're to a point where we want to do some progress checking in terms of the level of work, we'll be at a point where I will be able to bring to the board the, how we've defined as a district within the working groups, the tier one and the tier two, where I could already tell you, and having just worked with them yesterday, that those definitions are very much student-oriented.
Well, you've done good tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for a very thorough and really critically important.
Thank you, thank you for sticking through it with me.
Well, I, I think the same could be said for us.
Okay, so five-minute stretch? Yeah, it helps to reset the brain.
Before we take that five-minute stretch, or maybe part of that five-minute stretch, I want to make sure that we introduce a new member to the Eastside community. Our Director of Early Education, Dr. Wanda Roundtree, recently began her work with us today. I want to recognize you and thank you for being here tonight and for engaging with us in this equity work in the area of early education.
Welcome to the district. Thank you. Okay, so we are going to take a five-minute recess.
So I've been touching, I know, I've been touching on the, I just gotta like, you know what I mean? My point is just that.
The President is calling us to come back together for the meeting to resume? Are we having syrogenic procedures tonight, like freezing ourselves?
So we'll resume our meeting officially. And now we are ready to hear item 5.02, Presentation or Discussion Regarding Academic Performance of Students Returning From Expulsion. Again, I will introduce Associate Superintendent of Instruction, Mr. Glenn Van Der See.
In doing so, I'd like to invite Director of Student Services, Kenya Edison forward. This is a presentation at the request of the board. We've looked at expelled and suspended students before. We've looked at what happens to students who are expelled. This is a particular request, what is happening in terms of academic success rate for students who return from expulsion into our school system again?
Now it is. Kenya Edison, Director of Student Services. I first want to take the opportunity to commend my colleague on an amazing, excellent presentation. I'm always honored that we all serve on the same team here advocating for young people and establishing equitable, equitable communities in our district. I'm always honored that we all serve on the same team here advocating for young people and establishing equitable, equitable communities in our district. As she promised you, you will see this slide everywhere, all the time. It is how we govern our work. It's how we answer every question that comes up about policy or practices. It is how we sit in our meetings on a weekly basis and align all of our efforts and finances and decision making and how, when we pull into the parking lot, we're pulling into the parking lot on a daily basis to make this happen for all of our students and parents and staff. So I'm excited for that slide. We are definitely gonna use this every chance we get to get in front of any type of population. So I'm finally glad to be here. This was a request, and I believe President Cortezi, you asked about it last year, and it kept being put off, so I'm excited to share this. I will not be as comprehensive and as long as my colleague, but please feel free to ask questions as we go. There's no need to wait to the end. So in general, you wanted to know what happens when students refer, return from expulsions. As you know, we have a very comprehensive response when students are expelled from our district is not only to respond, to respond to the behavior, but to also respond to the need that calls the behavior. And so that's the rehabilitation plan that each of you vote on in closed session every time an expulsion comes through. So after that, after a student has met their requirements and that rehabilitation plan after the board has taken action to expel a student, this is the process to return. We have student services specialists in our department who are proactively calling parents. Our expulsions, for the most part, end at a semester unless it's a full calendar year. So before the end of the semester, we're already scheduling appointments for the students before the ex, the expiration of the expulsion, because we want students to start the first day of a semester. So they are proactively tracking the students who have been expelled. That rehabilitation pa, plan that you all vote on, which is you're issuing community service hours, you're requiring students to attend counseling, parent classes are recommended at some point, that students are attending the school once they've been expelled, wherever we've placed them, they have good attendance, they have good behavior, there's no other discipline. All of that, we check for before we reenter students in the district. We meet with parents on a one-on-one basis with students. They come in with proof of completion of the entire rehabilitation plan. We review that, we review their transcripts to make sure that the placement that we're making is gonna continue to further their success and that we're not hindering them and that it's an appropriate placement with the supports that are needed. And then we talk to the school sites about placement, and we literally handhold them and do a warm handoff to the school sites. It truly is, when we talk about this, equitable communities, even in the process after holding students accountable for their decisions, it does not negate our obligation for this work. So we welcome students back to this district as they are with the appropriate responses from adults and meeting their needs. So this is, in general, the process for reentry. It is a reentry meeting, and we reinstate the students, and we welcome them back, and we, we work on that. We talked about the rehabilitation plan. This is a generic one. You see it in every expulsion packet. We just, you'll, we just had one a couple of weeks ago. Nothing, it, nothing changes as far as the framework of it. The specific items in it may change. As you can see, some of the examples of the type of counseling may be decision making, conflict resolution, healthy relationships. Not only do we wanna hold students accountable, but we wanna build the capacity that they need so that they can be, uh, have self-management and self-awareness, so they have good conflict resolution skills, so that's interpersonal with the relationship piece of it, that they're able to make responsible decisions. So our response to the behavior is not just the consequence, but also the intervention, which is really interwoven in the MTSS framework. So that is in everything that we're doing. That being said, here's the data. So for this school year, eighteen nineteen, we're talking about expulsions that happened for seventeen, eighteen, we had eight students who were eligible to return to the district. That means re-enter, which means the full expulsion, which means they were expelled from the, the schools in our district and were placed at the county office of education for the term of their expulsion. That, eight students, seven of them actually returned, right? And so that's, that's exciting, that's a high number. As you can see, our ninth graders, they returned as tenth graders, our eleventh graders returned as seniors, and our tenth graders returned as juniors. Reentry, although you asked for information about expulsions, we also had thirty-eight reentries for students who had either left the district for juvenile justice involvement and/or had moved away and returned and had been away from school for a while. So we also do a reentry for those students to ensure that we're placing them on the path of success and that if we need them to have supports in place when they touch the campus, that they're in place. So although we've only had seven for expulsions, we have a total of thirty-eight this year for students who have left for other reasons. So we're excited about our students returning and getting them in school. Here's where our work is. This is where MTSS, having a framework that's consistent across the district is important, as we align our efforts, not only with our policies and practices, but also our funding as well. Of our students who returned, just to draw your attention, I've given students, we had three tenth graders, so they're A, B, and C. We had one eleventh grader, so that's student A, and then we had three seniors who returned. Our tenth graders, when we start talking about students who are returning, the first day of tenth grade, on track to graduate, we typically say you're starting with sixty credits, but we know even with, at a deficit at ten, you can make it up with summer school and other credit recovery options. So of our three tenth graders who returned this year and started, those who were expelled, they were off track when they returned to us. Although they were placed at Snell, which is now Sino, so you'll hear those terms used interchangeably, and that is a credit recovery model for students. Our students returned to us really not being able to utilize that time to get back on track and earn the credits in that environment. So when they returned to us, it behooves us to make sure that we're at least making a placement for them where they can at least recoup credits, be on track, and experience some type of success. So that's our tenth graders. For our, our eleventh grader that returned, they were able to really utilize that time to recoup some credits, but still were credit deficient. We would consider them not on track to graduate. We have options for our eleventh graders. We have our SPNs, we have foothills, so we could place them in a program so that they can recoup credits and then hopefully get them back on track and return to their school of residence for their senior year. For the eleventh graders that were expelled last year, I, I wanna almost just say one of the three, because, and the student C, it, we're just two points shy, they were just two points, uh, two credits shy of being on track for that, at least being less than ten, um, off track. But even our seniors returning did not really utilize that time well. And when I say that, I say, when you talk about, and there's a light on here, right, somewhere? Oops, that wasn't it. Okay. Okay.
You have a question with the last, um, the last comment?
Yes.
So, so, um, uh, you, you mentioned that sometimes, let's say, a, a student from, for example, we expelled, they, their original school were, were from Silver Creek. And then, and during the closed session meeting, for example, we might say, okay, the student might have to go to Sino or one of the county school. When they come back, they'll come back to a different school like James Lake or, um, uh, another school, right? Uh, but then you, you mentioned like, okay, so for those that might not have no credits, we might place them at, uh, foothill instead, so they can catch up with the credits. And then eventually at twelfth grade, they might be able to return back to their re, school residence like Silver Creek. Does that, does, does it happen like that a lot?
No, it doesn't.
Or, or, or maybe I misunderstood your statement.
It doesn't happen a lot, was your question, and no, it's not. But we do have students who have attended ninth and tenth grade at their resident school, went away for whatever reason, came back, second semester of their eleventh grade year, needed to recoup credits, but they wanna return to their community school and graduate with their peers, because they've attended middle school and half of high school with them. And so our goal, whenever we're talking about placement, when students reenter, is how can we ensure they're on track to graduate? So that may mean that they need to spend a semester or a semester and a half, depending on when they're, when, when they're coming in, to recoup credits. And we really, really want kids to recoup credits. I will tell you, many of our students who end up at one of our, if they come back in their eleventh grade year and they end up at, um, uh, SPN or foothill, they wanna stay there unfinished, because they have a, a positive experience, which is fine. But we do have a few who really engage, because their sole purpose is to return to their community scho, their school in their community and graduate with their peers. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yes, and, and, and yes, a little bit. And, and the reason I ask that further is because, um, sometimes, because of the issues that they had with their, at their home school and they were expelled, um, most of the, most of the time, by practice, we don't allow them to go back to the, to, to the home school.
So the practice has been, if students were expelled for one of the big five violations, they never returned to their home school. And so a big five, remember, is sale, brandish, sexual assault or battery, possession of an explosive, or selling narcotics, did I say selling narcotics? Or a possession of a firearm, I'm sorry. So the practice has been that those students never returned to the school where that happened at.
But out of the big five, they, they could, if they request, or, or, or was it a decision that was made during the, the, the board, oh, by, by, by the boards, uh?
So if they're on, yes, if they're on track to graduate, we always let that be a decision of the school site administration, because they may have, they may know of things that, well, I would like to have them back, but, we had one school that actually said yes, and the student was involved with other outside services who wanted to do a restorative practice with the schools, and so they did. And so they met over the summer, and they talked, and they gave the student an opportunity to come back, and he graduated last year. So there's a, there, there are some isolated circumstances, but in general, when we talk about reentries, when we look at the majority of the students who reentered this year, they weren't even on track. So going back to their home school, although an option, may not be in their best interest at this point. That's not to say that they won't recoup credit, but when we're talking about making decisions based on what the student needs are at the time, not necessarily, because everybody wants to go back where their friends are, but we really do have a conversation with the family about, the goal is graduation. It isn't just about being in that school, and you may not return there now, but it may be that if you just really buckle down and recoup credits and utilize the supports, you may be able to return there for your senior year, or for the following year. If, if you look under the student, where it says student A, B, and C, you'll see it says either semester plus, a half a semester, that's how long the students were at the county office school. So for students who were at the county office for more than a semester, we would expect that they would be coming back have, having earned more credits. So when that's not the case, we always look into why that is, and we always, not only ask the students, but the parents, because this is about teaching them to advocate for themselves as well, and to empower them to be advocates, is what else do you need? Like, what, what, why do you think that is, and what else do you need from us to ensure your success? So it is a, it's not just a, um, a checkbox, we just don't go through the checks and then say, okay, you're back in the district. We really do try and be comprehensive on how we respond to student needs.
So I realize this is a very, very tiny sample of data, as data goes, um, and, and it's pretty discouraging too, right? Would you say this is typical of students coming back from expulsion?
Yes.
That they, that they, that there's such a, such a little difference between when they left and when they came back?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
It's what, and, and, I mean, I don't know if there's, anecdotally, do we know why?
Um, we have worked with the county office of education to kinda streamline a lot of processes. Some of it is delay in enrollment, because when they were in an orientation mode, when you had to attend an orientation, but they weren't offered as often, so kids were delayed in enrollment, um, that was a big issue. So we really advocated for our students. Um, so for our students, they now, as soon as we refer them, they get on an independent study contract until the next orientation, so they're able to start work immediately. We, now they've moved locations, they're no longer down, um, uh, near Andrew Hill, so we provide tokens for students so that, uh, because you have to be attending and showing up every single day before they give you a bus pass, so we've eliminated that hurdle of transportation. We give our kids tokens until they get their bus pass from the county office of education. But that orientation lag was a huge issue. Um, it's also, there was also an issue of, um, them saying, students never showed up and never went through the process that they were obligated to do, which is SAR, insurance, and how are we, um, trying to reach outreach to students. Also an issue of access, right? We have an issue of equity in access, and that we have one, one campus, and that one campus serves the entire county. Did that answer your question? Okay. So moving on. I don't know if I'm doing something wrong here. There we go. Okay. So just as I just said, students who are on track, you can see it here, we're saying on track, that student was two points away from being ten points shy of what it was needed for that grade level, and then six of our students need a credit recovery options. So when we talk about ninth graders returning as tenth graders, um, again, we have to talk about equity and access, and are these students receiving other supports and services that they need? We luckily are piloting some programs like Bounce Back, which is an amazing program for some of our ninth graders, um, who need that extra step in, into high school and that extra support in that small learning environment, but still being able to, um, uh, intermingle with their peers. So that's one of the options that we could use, but we still have some work to do around providing access for kids. When students return, like I just said, for the most part, we wanna place them someplace where they can actually get on track for graduation. For our tenth graders, when they return, we have a few options, so many of them will return to a comprehensive high school, which is why you see that number there. We had, we did have one student who returned to, um, an SPN, because they need a credit recovery options, and we want students to have that. Um, if there is no space, or if there's a waiting list, we default to sending them back to their school of residence. We also had one who went to our alternative program. Yes.
So these are the, so these are the seven students that returned, and all of them really, except for the one, so we had one that was on track, so yeah, I assume he, that person is one of the five.
So, yes.
Okay. But then they all kinda needed credit recovery, right? So what?
All the tenth graders went to a comprehensive school.
Oh, okay. Oh, 'cause the small but necessary schools aren't available?
Yes, it's eleventh and twelfth grade.
I, as we start to look at, you know, making sure that students are, have sixty credits at the end of ninth grade, are we, is that something we wanna look at?
We've been having comprehensive, in detail conversations on Ed Services end, along with the superintendent and cabinet, about how do we respond to the needs of ninth and tenth graders?
Yeah, how can we intervene earlier, so that they're not in that big crunch time at the end?
Yes. What we don't wanna do is say, you need help, but we need you to fail one more year before we can give it to you.
Right.
And that's pretty much the default of the system, not because that's intentionally what we're saying, but because the access isn't there until eleventh grade, it, it's kinda what, what happens.
Well, and I, a, part of me wonders, just in terms of student development, or, you know, child development, you know, if we could intervene earlier and they could have successes earlier, then they leave here feeling successful, as opposed to, man, I just got through that by the skin of my teeth, you know?
Yes.
Right?
We agree.
Yeah.
Yes. So as we continue to do this work and align our efforts, these are the things that we're doing, uh, in student services to ensure students are returning, um, to our district, ready to succeed, and so we're making sure we welcome families back to the district. It's, it's not, we want you here. Thank you so much for being here, and thank you for allowing us to serve you and partner in your students' education. Um, we're really looking at the student development piece, as we talk about social emotional learning, and really helping our young people have those core competencies of self-awareness and self-management and being able to have positive relationships and have responsible decision making. Part of that is owning, yes, I made a mistake, and then what you would do differently. So that's important for us for kids when they return, not to hold it, them over their head as if, and hold it over their head until they graduate, but just as a checks and balances, to make sure that they understand what they need to do differently and to advocate for themselves. We are, and, and as you just said, uh, uh, President, we are talking about how do we explore opportunities for our returning students who still need credit recovery? And how do we make sure that we're able to get them that, the, um, the, the, uh, services they need, so that they can be on track? And then we are, as usual, as we talk about, and we're always talking about our core values, we're making sure that our processes are transparent. There isn't not a gotcha, there isn't, I don't know what to expect. We're very clear about what the process is upfront. You approve, um, that rehabilitation plan, we send it out to parents, and, and whatever their preferred language is, it's posted on our, in our BPs, it's posted in the parent handbook, and so there is no, I gotcha in this. And we, as directors on Ed Services, we all work to know what everyone else is doing. As you saw, my colleague could stand up here and talk about the UBR, like, that was work that she governs, because we really are trying to integrate all of the work that we do, so that anyone can respond to a parent when they say, I was expelled and I don't know what to do. Anyone within our division would be able to respond. So we really are working on that transparency piece. Yes. No, it's okay.
Um, so I appreciate so much the passion that you bring to this role, and, um, how do, would you? I wanna, I don't wanna say anything that has any unintended consequences, but, um, would you say that, that your colleagues share your enthusiasm for bringing back students from expulsion?
I will say that, um, we want our students in our schools, but we may not always be equipped to serve their needs.
I just, you know, and this is historic, and, and hopefully this doesn't happen anymore, but, um, in, in one of my programs, I worked with a young man who was, um, not, he was not expelled, he was suspended from. he was suspended from three different schools and his experiences was three principals telling him, I don't want you at my school. And, you know, I get that, I get there's a real component to adults just having, you know, but I also see from an equity standpoint, you know, that that's an interpretation that a student can internalize in a really counterproductive way, right?
Yeah.
So, I'm hoping that, that that doesn't happen anymore because we have been so immersed in this equity language and, you know, that there's a paradigm that's changing around that. And I, and it's also one data point, you know, one, it's one in particular, but I realize it's not talking about the tens of thousands of students that have gone through our schools, but.
Right. And so, I do want to reiterate what my colleague has said about those common assurances. The common assurance is, is building capacity in the adults. So, whether you're at Piedmont or Independence or Mount Pleasant or Oak Grove, the responses will be the same because we are building it into who we are. And so, the multi-tiered systems of support, when we start talking about climate and culture, it just isn't about what kids are doing in interaction with each other or what the adults are doing in interaction with each other. It's really what is the expectation when you step on any of our campuses? The lens of customer service is being spoke on in every single meeting because that really is what we're doing. Like, our clients are students and families and we know when students and families or clients don't show, business fails. And so, we have to respond to that, to that existence. So, we meet, you know, constantly with administration and site administrators, we know what their needs are, they're conveying them, and then we are trying to respond appropriately so that we can meet the needs of staff as well as what our mandate is, is to provide equitable communities for our students. And so, it is work. It is work.
Well, I should point out that none of the administrators that I'm referring to are here anymore, so. Present company excepted.
We all have off days. We all have off days, though. We just have to recommit daily.
Yes.
And Madam President, to your point, because the sample size is so small within the MTSS system, we need to be able to respond to our ninth and 10th graders before they reach 11th and 12th grade, before we say, how about going to this small but necessary school? We need to be able to respond on that comprehensive campus as well as not every single freshman is ready emotionally, mature-wise, to take six classes. So, we need to be able to create the systems and structures in place to support that student to be on campus all day, but not necessarily taking six classes because if they're within 10 credits of reaching 60 as a 10th grader, they're gonna be able to make that up in the next three years. I'd much rather have them be successful in lesser, in a smaller amount of classes than take six and fail three because that has a huge emotional impact on them.
Diddle. That's it. Any other questions or comments? I'm done. Nope. Right to the point.
I, I want to ask you some, for the student seniors, when they get to the stage that they're gonna build a credit and they are on the stage that they'll be graduated, do we follow up, you know, after, you know, at the stage that they were expulsion and really have any way that we support those seniors that if they mess it up and they could not graduate, but they don't have enough, the credit to graduate it? I mean, because looking to the whole system that, you know, we want them to graduate and we, but I don't know that, do we have any other student that could not graduate because, you know, the incidents happened that they were exposed or they still continue to graduate it, but they might not do it well, you know, because for the student that when they get involved in the big incidents and it's really dramatized their life and some of them might not really want to look forward, you know, for their future. So, I'm kind of concerned, you know, for the seniors, students get the age of they almost finished, but did not have enough credit or what are we going to do with those students?
So, let me clarify, I'm not sure I understand the question. Are you asking when seniors get expelled?
Yes.
How do we ensure they graduate?
Yeah, how do we support them?
Okay. So, the same process is in place for all students. So, if a senior is referred for an expulsion, they would be referred to the county office event as would any other program. The great thing about a different program that's offered, which is OIA Opportunity Youth Academy, is their purview is 16 to 24. So, not to mention, if you, if the expulsion is only for the remainder of the school year for a senior, they also can return to the district and attend our own adult ed and finish their high school career. So, there are options and I will say that when recommendations come forth to you all for approval, the colleague, my colleagues who have reviewed the facts and the information, they take things like that into consideration. I'm sure you can see there's been an evolution of recommendations that have come from administrative hearing panels over the years and really that focus is how do we still hold a student accountable for their actions and still support them with higher education or at least attaining a high school diploma?
And students that do return and they do not graduate on time, they can either go to summer school and/or come back as fifth-year seniors and/or enroll in adult ed or if they're so far behind, we do encourage them to enroll in Soundset Conservation Corp. So, there's multiple avenues for them to still reach their goal of graduation.
Oh, that's good. But I, that's something that I'm real concerned for the seniors, you know, when they are the grade, you know, they still have time to catch up, you know, but when you get to a senior, it's 12th grade and that's gonna be much harder for them, much more impacting their life and really want to see if we, you know, support them so they can move on. Thank you.
You're welcome.
To your point, Chris, I guess the only difference between those who graduate with us or graduate with Soundset Conservation Corp. is that on the diploma, it wouldn't say graduating from.
Eastside.
Eastside. Yeah, and it probably says Soundset Conservation Corp.
That's correct.
So, that's, yeah, that probably is. The diploma.
It all depends on how far away from earning their credits they are, whether it's reasonable that they can make it in the summer school as a fifth year or, or really if Soundset Conservation Corp., it's a lower level to reach your diploma if that's a better pathway for you.
Okay, so I have this, just one more question. So, those who graduate from the adult ed, does it say that they're graduating from adult ed or does it say that?
Yes.
From, okay.
Yes.
Not part of the district, even if they're part of the district.
Eastside Adult Ed.
Eastside Adult Ed.
But it is a diploma.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a GED path too, but they can get a diploma, actual high school diploma through adult ed.
Yes.
And my colleague will be presenting immediately after me about adult ed.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Just, I, I want to thank you very much for the presentation and I love that it was presented in tandem with the multi-tiered systems of support because, you know, I can kind of connect the dots between these two, you know?
That was the hope.
Thank you, I got a snap to it. And I also want to acknowledge you for putting our, our core values and equity policy on the bottom of your slides. I really think that that says that that is.
That's what we're about.
That's, that's the lens.
That's why I came to work for you, Si.
Yes.
All right, have a good one.
Thank you. Now, we're moving along to item 5.03, a presentation or discussion regarding adult education programs, a 90-day report. Again, we will introduce those.
So, once again, in building our equitable communities, as you astutely observe in talking about our approach with multi-tiered systems of support for our students that experience success from the get-go and for those that return, but also that continue their education, whether they attended a high school with us or through our high schools into adult ed or members of our community. The Director of Adult Education, Trace Williams, is a semester on the job and has had a chance to.
Transform the program.
You know, you joke, but we're, we're moving quickly, actually, and I, you know, I'm not going to steal our thunder in any ways, but she will be returning in a different presentation to present this group with an opportunity to take leadership across the consortium as it relates to graduation across districts and that's leadership that's already emanated from the first semester on the job. So, she's here to give you an overview, an orientation, and also to look about where we're going with that program.
And as you begin your presentation, I'm really aware it's been a long time since the board made a moment like this for adult ed, you know, to be center stage, so I'm really looking forward to this.
Okay, no pressure. So, I just want to thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to be the Director of Adult Ed and more importantly, thank you for approving the Director for Early Education. That was a key change that was needed and so, it helps me to be able to focus and do the work that is so important for adult education. So, thank you for, again, for your vote and for the opportunity to hire an additional staff member. For tonight, for adult ed, my overview is really, I want to tell you about our role in the South Bay Consortium for Adult Ed. So, I'll give you a brief overview and how we tie in, what the consortium is, what the goal and the work is. I will also show funding, how we're funded and what our three-year trend has been. I will go over enrollment, who our students are, who's the community that we serve and also our program areas, as well as present to you the opportunities and this is the work that, the vision that we have going forward as well as challenges, but I'll present the challenges before the opportunities. And so, let's start off with the South Bay Consortium for Adult Education. In 2013, the consortium was formed and it consists of five adult schools and two come out, two community college districts. So, you see, we have Eastside, Santa Clara, Silicon Valley, which is metro ed, Neil Peters, Campbell, adult community education, and then we have the San Jose Evergreen Community College District as well as the West Valley Mission College District.
So, was the consortium prompted by the state approach to funding?
Yes, yes. And so, when we get to the funding and I'll, I'll say it now, but we are all direct funded. And so, the work that we do in the consortium is we meet twice a month and we have faculty work groups. We center our work around, this is kind of the model, this is the emerging model, we call this the orange monster, but it's the universal pathway linking adult education and community college. And so, what this, what this wants to portray is that there's no wrong door in adult education and so, there are multiple points, multiple points of entry to the path to a better career and job. So, whether immigrant, unemployed, whether it's job retraining, leaving high school, leaving incarceration, whether it's community-based organization, organizations or leaving the military, there are points of entry within our system. And so, when we look over to the right and we look at the foundations, we're talking about academic achievement, learning communities, common assessments and dual enrollment and those things. And then we create bridges within the consortium. Each adult school has transition specialists who work with our students to make sure that as they are in our systems, that we provide opportunities for them to identify career options, work interests, whatever that might be, and so that we provide them a warm handoff into our community college system. So, you see that there's counseling available, we are working and we are improving, having individualized plans for each of our students who are in primarily our ESL programs at probably the intermediate, high and above level of English. We have transition supports, we have cross agencies, systems and wraparound services. And then at the end of the day, creating those bridges and get them to the advanced pathways of having a diploma, stackable certificates. We have several CT programs that offer certifications, things that meet industry standard and the goal may be for not all, but most of our students to transfer into maybe a community college pathway. Right now, our consortium, we are working on a three-year plan, but every year we work under an annual plan. So, for 18, 19, these are the main areas. There are nine project areas that we work on within the consortium. I won't go through each one of these, you can read what those areas are, but they are connected to our program areas within Eastside. Also, when we plan our budget and our funding, it is important that we have this in mind because as we are funded, we are being held accountable to our annual plan as a consortium. And so, our plan that we have, it's how we budget our money that we receive. And so, with our funding, we are funded by state and by federal. So, California Adult Education Program, it was formerly called AEBG, the Adult Education Block Grant, then it went to the Adult Education Program, now they threw the C on it because they want to be Cape, not ape. So, it's the California Adult Education Program and that's the name of the funding. That is our state funding model and that is where we get primarily the majority of our funds and I'll show you those dollars in just a minute. And then we have our federal funds, which is our WEOA Title II, which is our Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. And this funding is solely for our adult basic education, our ESL, our civics and our adult secondary education. So, this pot of money does not fund our career technical education program. All of that comes out of our state money. So, show me the money. So, this is a consortium-wide look at how we are funded and so, this is the three-year trend of funds from 16, 17 to 18, 19. I have, our numbers are in bold. We are the largest adult school, we do receive the largest amount of funding and so, we have consistently been increasing in our funding and this current year, we're at $6.6 million in funding. So, when we report our funds, all the schools can see each other's funding. So, you know, there's all eyes on me because we get the biggest bang. So, we want to make sure that the plans that we have on Eastside, that we are serving our community, that we're being good stewards of our funds and that we are offering programs that meet the needs of our community. And so, when we look at funds and budgets and programs and requests, maybe that I might ask later down the road, it's with this in mind that we want to make sure, because we don't, we don't ever have to give this money back. We can roll over the state money year to year. The idea is that first in, first out, they make the assumption that we'll use rollover money first, but our consortium members will kind of look and say, well, you didn't spend that last year, can we contribute to something else? And so, just want to keep that in mind as we look at funding. So, as a.
With the right-hand corner, 17.2 million?
Yes.
Is that because it's carryover or was that?
No, that's the allocation.
That's the allocation.
That's the yearly allocation.
So, is that COLA? I don't remember adult ed getting an increase. Do you remember, Chris? I mean, that's great, I'm glad the state did that, but because.
There is a COLA that is added onto the annual amounts every year, so that does increase, include a COLA, yes.
Great, all right, thank you.
Yes. Yes.
It doesn't sound like this is awarded on an ADA type of framework.
No.
How is the money allocated from the state to each member of the consortium?
Okay, so, as it has been explained to me, when the consortium was formed in 2013, it was based on how the state looked at each adult school and it was based on a maintenance of effort of how the school, the enrollment and things were being funded at that time. So, the ongoing enrollment was based on maintenance of effort, not ADA, so to speak, but the consistent programming over the period. And, and Chris, you can jump in and help me at any time, but it was based off a maintenance of effort when the consortium was formed in 2013. The fact that we were all direct funded means that there is no fiscal agent at the consortium level where we put the pool of money together and we divvy it up. We get our own allocation and it's best that way, so.
So, I'm, I'm not familiar with the term maintenance of effort and.
So, when, when the state set up the consortium and those that became partner of that consortium, their past allocation based on their programs that they offered is how they were funded initially?
Because there were some schools where their district swept their money and kind of killed a lot of their programs and offerings and so, some of that is also reflected for some of our partners here.
So, this really isn't based on, this is based on the programs that are offered and not necessarily the students that are served?
Both, it is, it's both. It's not based on attendance, but it is based on programs and enrollment, yes.
And we have the flexibility of changing the program based on the. And we have the flexibility of changing the program based on the student's needs.
Okay.
So, is there a general sense right now in our adult ed program that we are at least sufficiently funded and not in some kind of-
We are sufficiently funded.
Oh, that's good to hear.
We are sufficiently funded. And the total funding that includes, so this is our WEOA. So, this is the federal money, so the six million that you saw was just state money. So, we get an additional seven hundred and thirty-four thousand for eighteen nineteen for our federal programs, again, which include our basic education, ESL, EEL civics, and adult secondary education. You like the money, huh?
Yeah.
Quick question, EEL civics, would that be like preparation for citizenship?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Integration, right. So, when we look at our total funding, that includes our state and federal, we are at seven point three million dollars for eighteen nineteen.
And you said that if you don't use all of this funding, there will be carryover to the next year?
The state. So, with the federal, we are expected to spend all of our federal money. So, what we do is we spend federal first-
Okay.
And then, we attack the state. So, we make sure that at the end of the year, that our expenses hit our federal budget first.
So, is it the consortium that agrees to allow the carryover, or the state says-
It's the state.
You may do that, but they don't want to see it consistently happen, because they want the money spent the year it's allocated?
As of right now, they haven't made a big deal about the rollover, because they make the assumption that you're going to spend the rollover first, and so-
Okay.
But, what I said earlier was more from the consortium members, this kind of eye spying my purse-
Right.
You know, and, you know, maybe want some help, or can you share some of yours with us kind of mentality? And so, as we look at opportunities to expand and grow our programs here at Eastside, I'm not willing at a point to share, because I want to be able to make sure that we are in a position to offer the programs that our community needs, and that we're in a solid financial position before doing that. Any other questions on money? You like it?
Yeah, I mean, well, I like it. So, the statement is going up, but the federal money is going down?
So, oops, okay. So, the federal money has different factors at play, so, and this can be a whole nother presentation at other times. So, we get payment points, we get paid for, so there's this thing called CASAS, and it's assessment, and that factors into some of the federal, you know, how we get some of the federal money. And that's based on the number of, the students who take our pre-test and post-test, particularly, well, both in our high school diploma track, as well as our ESL track. And so, if there's growth that is shown, we get so many points. And so, then there's payment points that are associated with funding. And so, this one kind of does get impacted by enrollment from year to year, but it's kind of a federal funding source, and so, it's not as straightforward as the state explanation. So, I would love to dive deeper into that to give you a better picture, maybe at another time, when I have a more solid understanding of how all those payment points.
And it's also maybe based on the type of students that we have as well. It seems like the federal money is mostly paid for, what, ESL and EEL civic classes?
Yes, yes.
So, it's probably based on the type of students we have at any given year?
Yes, and then when I show you the enrollment numbers, you will be able to see exactly who our students are. Am I shrinking that every time I do this, or that? Oh, okay. Are we starting over, what happened? Me or you?
This is an abstract question, but is any of that federal money likely to be impacted by the shutdown that's going on?
The shutdown is tied to our national parks, museums, homeland security-
Direct operations of the federal, not contracted ones.
Okay, good.
And so, with all this money, what do we, my jacket keeps tipping this thing. So, with all this money, what do we serve? Here are our program areas. So, at Eastside Adult Ed, we have six program areas. We have our adult basic literacy, we have our high school diploma, we have our high school equivalency, that's at GED. We have English as a Second Language, we have citizenship, and we have career technical education. And so, to enroll in these classes, there's several processes. And so, for our high school diploma, we have three enrollment opportunities. Those are concurrent students, so students who are currently enrolled in our comprehensive high schools who need to recover credit their senior year, there's an opportunity for them to take night class at adult education. They get the form from their counselor, it's filled out, they come over, they're able to enroll in any of our high school classes for the evening. We have full-time students, and where we have day and night classes for high school diploma, that students are able to take. And we also have a distant learning option, so this is where students come in once a week, they meet with a teacher, but they primarily do their work online, and so we use a software called Odysseyware. And so, those students are able to earn their high school diploma credits that way. When we look at our high school equivalency-
I'm sorry, in terms of the high school diploma, the full-time status and the distant learning are typically adults that are not enrolled in our-
Nineteen and over, or eighteen and over, not in a high school.
Okay, and so, in the concurrent, it's not grade level, it's actually age level, right? Because you can be a senior, be a seventeen-year-old and can't be in it?
Senior, seventeen, it's seventeen and a half, so-
Oh, it is, seventeen and a half, okay, thank you.
Yes, and so, we recognize that there are other options for students to take within Eastside, so we want them to make sure that they've done everything they could to be successful, that they're comprehensive, as well as their, the SBNs, and we would be their last stop and option in helping them meet those graduation credits. We don't want students to say, "Well, I'm just not going to do it here, I'm going to go to adult ed." So, we want to make sure that they had every option within the comprehensive and SBNs to earn their diploma before coming over on a full-time status. But our concurrent students, oftentimes, they can only take so many classes in a day where night school is their only option to recover the credits that they need towards graduation. And so, that's, those are the students that come over. I recently did a presentation for the APDs. I've been off the campus for a minute, I forgot the terminology, for the APDs. And so, particularly in the fall, we know sometimes that seniors may not pass that math class, or the social studies class, or the English class, but also just wanted to remind them that, you know, consider the adult ed for those needs, so that we make sure that they're able to walk the stage on their campuses in May. And so, keeping that relationship, staying in front, not being an afterthought, not waiting until May and saying, "Sorry, you didn't graduate, now go off to adult ed." Let's catch them while the opportunity is still there, so that they can be on our campus, and so that they can still earn that diploma at their comprehensive high school. So, I have tasked my transition specialist to be the point of contact with the high school counselor so that they have someone to go to, so that students are successful.
Seventeen and a half is the minimum requirement?
That has been past practice, I have been flexible in allowing seventeen-years-old. I have a hard time telling a student no when they need to earn the credits to recover. So, board policy allows us to have seventeen. And so, if there's anything that you guys want to look at to change that-
So, that's actually was my question then, thank you. So, is it past practice, is it ed code that limits who can be in adult ed, or could we move this down to juniors?
There's nothing written at the state level that says what the age limit is. And so, when we talk about opportunity youth, and when we talk about WEOA, WEOA actually is for also, the Adult Education and Family Literacy Act covers from sixteen to twenty-four. It actually go as low, I see, stay out of my purse. It covers from sixteen to twenty-four, and when we go into opportunities and I talk about my role on the consortium, that's one of the things that I am the lead on, is the opportunity youth leg of our consortium work. So, we can frame this, and there's opportunities just to give adult ed a new look and a new face, and that's something that would take a lot of conversation to figure out how that looks. But, the opportunity is there. When I went over and I told my staff, "This is like a white camp, this is a canvas of opportunity." And so, I am encouraged and hopeful and have a lot of ideas, and so, there is not a set age other than what is in board policy that says we allow our seventeen-year-olds to enroll in the GED program. And so, I think partly is because maybe we wanted to make sure that people didn't take, exit their campus to come to adult ed to do it differently, because some people have an idea, "Well, I don't want to do all of this work, I'm just going to go over here and get my diploma from adult ed." So, I think that could be a thought, is why that age limit was put into policy. I'm not sure you were here then, so.
What would be the problem with that? Students wanting to send alternative education experience, would that be a problem?
It's because we have our alternatives within the K-12, you know, mainstream and alternative programs, and adult ed is a whole other system, you know, for a whole other demographic, and we start bleeding them like that. It's, I think it'll create issues as you go along.
And the other thing to be careful is that there's adults mixing with underage.
That is a concern, yeah.
It's when you're coming in a classroom, and so, we, so keeping that separate and being aware of the dynamics. You have sixteen-year-old in there with fifty-year-olds, and so, we don't have the separation, that would be healthy.
That part I understand, but, you know, I mean, some students wanting to have a smaller setting, or an evening setting, or something like that, I think that that's an interesting thing worth exploring, how to, you know, accommodate those.
So, as we start to generate ideas, and we talk about MTSS, and what responses we have for students, what they are and what their needs, I appreciate the question for us to revisit, as we build this out, what role would the adult ed program have in, for a certain set of students, if that's the most appropriate response for them, to make that available to them? That would be something that we would bring back later if-
And I think from a concurrent enrollment standpoint, that is something that's more viable, because we do have high school-only classes pretty much at night. Most of our classes at night for the high school diploma are high school students. Moving on to high school equivalency, this is where we have students who come in, they take placement tests. If they perform at a sixth-grade level and higher in reading comprehension and math, they're able to enroll in our GED prep class. If their skills fall below that, then we recommend that they enroll in our adult literacy program, because without the comprehension level, taking the GED test will be a little bit challenging. So, we do ask that their comprehension at least be at the sixth-grade level. GED is offered in a classroom setting, five days a week, and also at night, and we also have a distant learning option at Conexium. Our ESL and our citizenship enrollment process, pretty much the same. We have placement tests, so, community members come in, they take a counter test, they are then- they're different levels, there's a prelit level, there's a beginning high, beginning low, intermediate. Depending on where they fall, determines that the next step in their path. And so, we often have students, if they're prelit, then they are given an appointment to see a counselor for orientation and to take the next placement test. So, the enrollment within ESL varies based on how they perform at each of the levels. If they perform a little higher, they then are scheduled to take a next test, which are some of the CASA tests, to determine placement in classes. Oftentimes, we do have a waiting list for ESL, because there's a timing between when those tests are given, because they then have to go to orientation before they get in a class. So, sometimes it could be a little delayed time for once a person walks in to the counter to enroll for ESL before they actually get into a class, just because of the orientation and the assessment process that happens, and the timing of it.
Do we still have a waiting list?
We will always, well, so with ESL, ESL is an ongoing enrollment, so, and that's, that's a population where it's turning, because classes are five days a week, and life happens for many individuals. And so, as spots become available, then others are able to enroll. You have students who have to leave for various emergencies, go out of country, not be able to be there. And it's also depending on location. So, where we were highly impacted this past year was in our beginning levels. A lot of times, students are, they want to go to either Independence or Overfelt, or they want Andrew Hill. And so, without the staff or the number of classes needed, and waiting lists at Andrew Hill might be larger, whereas if we offer Independence or Overfelt, sometimes they turn us down on that, because they rather wait. And so, depending on where the location is, also determines how long someone stays on a waiting list. So, there's always a waiting list, it tends to move fast, but then, because there's always people always waiting and coming to enroll, because it's an open enrollment, and you can enroll at any point, pretty much throughout the semester.
And do you have a counselor that could help students speaking the language, so they can understand what do they need to take, and, you know, because I know that for ESL student, it's very difficult for them to be enrolled and take the test, then know what's going to be next, you know?
So, we are challenged by being able to offer translation in every language of the students that come. We do have quite a few of our staff members who speak Vietnamese, Spanish, or whatnot, but there are other languages that we might be challenged by, that we're not able to offer that service the way that we would want to. And so, it's not there for every language, and depending on site. But primarily, we do have staff who are able to translate. A lot of times, when students come in, they're working with the office staff, so we might be limited, depending on what night it might be and who's working that night. But, generally, somebody's there to get them help in primarily the Vietnamese and the Spanish language. Would you agree, Kathy? So, Kathy Fries here, she is my program coordinator and ESL program coordinator, so. Any other question on enrollment? Alrighty, so who are our students? And so, a lot of numbers, but I'm just going to walk you, just briefly, and this is a three-year trend. So, at the top, we have this by gender, and then ethnicity, and then age group. So, primarily, we serve female students, primarily Asian and Latino are the ethnicities that we serve. And when you get down to age group, you'll see that twenty-five to forty-four has this huge number, but it's pretty consistent between nineteen to fifty-four. Have you noticed that twenty-five to forty-four has almost doubled, you know, because you have nineteen to twenty-four, then twenty-five to forty-four, and then forty-five to fifty-four? And so, you can say we serve nineteen to fifty-five, is our primary group of who we serve. You will note that in this chart, that our enrollment dropped from twenty sixteen seventeen to seventeen eighteen. We lost just about a thousand students. And so, yeah, and we have a last visit, so we're in discovery, we're asking questions like, "What happened?" And so, we know what program area, that will be my next slide.
So, that drop wouldn't be because we had a different way of counting in the past versus how we're counting now?
No.
No, it's a hard loss?
Yes, yes. And there's speculation is a loss due to immigration, undocumented, and people not wanting to come out. So, we have to look at the year, who's it present, and the things are just happening in our community. So, those are some speculations. Also, our community college, they offer some non-credit classes, so some questions out there are more of our clientele going there. But what we do know, what was reported at the consortium, we have about over two-hundred-something thousand individuals in our county who don't have diplomas, who need adult education. So, a thousand here, there's still plenty to serve, right? So, we still have plenty of students and community members to serve. So, losing a thousand when there's still hundreds of thousands out there who need adult education, we need to figure out what it is that we're offering, and how can we meet the demands that of our community to grow our program?
I'm not understanding the term "frequency," and I'm also curious to understand what would be the unduplicated count of people in our system that we're serving?
So, this chart is the unduplicated numbers, the chart that I have after this, this chart, this is a duplicated. So, this chart here is by-
Let's go back to the first one, because I'm really lost. So, the term "frequency" means what?
The number of students enrolled during that program year.
I didn't come up with that word, "frequency."
So, this chart is a chart generated by the consortium data team. It's pulled out of a system that's called TOPPS Enterprise, so, I didn't come up with the term "frequency."
But it's similar to unduplicated? Okay, so, next question I have is that in the first, I'd say fifteen years near- Okay, so, next question I have is that in the first, I'd say fifteen years, nearly twenty years of my being on board that, I always understood our adult ed program as, as serving like twenty thousand plus people. And, and that figure lasted for a long time. And then all of a sudden, it's like, whoa, we're down to like twelve thousand, fifteen thousand, ten thousand. And I, and I said, what happened here? And I, and it seemed to be a different way of like now counting or accounting for how we were delivering the service. And it got a little murky for me, and then I turned my attention away from it. But I, I'm curious as to how, what are we counting back in the day, that we constantly were in the, I'll just generalize, and I think it's fair generalization, we're constantly in the range of twenty thousand plus students. So, I used to tell people, oh, our district has twenty-five, twenty-six thousand students way back when, and twenty thousand plus adult ed students, because that figure was always in front. So, what happened?
That's good information for me, so I'll, I'll look into that to figure out.
So, I remember.
Because I can tell you, I don't see those numbers. Our campuses, first of all, aren't large enough to, to hold that, even with the day and night. So, we have morning and night classes. And I'm just saying, I'm, I'm looking at the enrollment numbers for attendance. And so, when you say twenty thousand, I don't know where they went to school. And maybe that was back when there was community-based instruction, where some of those classes were held on high school campuses, where there was, when I was teaching at Silver Creek, we had adult classes on campus at night for high school students. And so, maybe back then is when the program was more expanded, to where there was offerings, where classes were held on the high school campuses, which that would make sense, but.
I did get the impression along the way that this was more of a duplicated count generated? You know, that there's, there was a distribution of that, students doing this, students doing that, blah, blah, blah. And, and it was a duplicated count is my suspicion, but it was a figure that lasted for a long time.
And I do know one of the things.
And I'm getting it.
I, I, I keep nodding, because when I ran for school board in two thousand four, the first time, that was the number that was given. Not only, I know what was told, but it's also on the district website. In two thousand four, there was about twenty-five thousand high school students, twenty-six thousand adult ed students. And it was in two thousand four.
Yeah.
Well, during the economic crisis, adult ed took a hit like everyone else. They lost twenty percent of their funding, and that's why they created the block grant with the consortium. So, the funding has dropped by twenty percent. I don't know if that correlates with the enrollment drop, but I, I suspected it was duplicated.
And in two thousand four, I was a teacher in the classroom. And like I said, I know that there were classes, recovery classes for students through adult ed on the high school campuses. So, that would then also add to the increased enrollment, just for night. If you figure every campus had adult ed offering for high school. And then there's community-based education. When I was at Piedmont, there was a teacher who taught international cuisine out of the home ec room. So, there were community-based classes, where people who just wanted to do things for fun, they weren't really trying to do, get a diploma, or learn English. They just wanted a hobby class, wanted sewing. And so, some of those things that, that we don't offer anymore, but they're offered at Santa Clara. So, that could be where some of that enrollment took place. And they were taking maybe multiple classes, so that would make sense.
Yeah. But anyhow, I have, this is an interesting observation. So, in sixteen seventeen, we have four thousand, right? Seventeen eighteen, we have like three thousand. So, it's a twenty-five percent drop in student enrollment. However, if you look at a total funding, of, from sixteen seventeen to seventeen eighteen, it's only a million, less than a million dollars less in total funding. So, this is like only, less than five percent of the decrease in funding, whereas we have twenty-five percent decrease in student enrollment.
Yeah, I, again, I suspect, once you put apples to apples and, you know, kind of thing, it's not going to be as stark.
I'll be happy to look into that for my next free.
But don't divert from the transformational efforts. This is just a side thing whenever you can.
Besides that, looking to the decline in enrollment from two thousand fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, I noticed that the, even though that we have the immigration incidents happen during the two thousand fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, but the decline in enrollment also happened in Asian community. As you're looking up to the enrollment was dropped, you know, from two thousand thirty-four, from two thousand sixteen seventeen, went down to seventeen eighteen. It's probably like about four, pretty much about under four hundred decline in enrollment for Asian. And I don't think an Asian community would be affected by the immigration, because most of Asian student come over here will get the legal status. So, I think maybe we're going to take a look of, you know, why do we have that such a decline?
And those are questions that we have as a staff, as we're going through our WASC mid-cycle, that we are asking, and we're trying to dig in, in deeper. One of the things when I learned, and that adult ed didn't really had a lot of data points to look at and to dig into. So, these charts are some of the first charts that some of my staff have seen in the data. So, they're excited to dig and answer questions, as they have been there for a while, and they're trying to speculate, you know, what has happened in program and what it looks like. And so, we are answering those questions as we speak, as to what are some potential reasons that enrollment shift from sixteen seventeen to seventeen eighteen. And so, as we complete this year, we'll have an opportunity to compare eighteen nineteen, when we finish, to seventeen eighteen, to see, is it flat, is it increasing, where are we at? And so, and how do we expand our program, so that we can increase our opportunities for our community?
Yeah, I saw, received those marketing brochure, you know, from Eastside.
Did everybody get their book for the spring?
I know, it's, it's very good. And, but those things that I know that will, yeah, everyone would receive in Eastside community. But like what I said, I'm also a product of adult education, and I'm really support this program. And appreciate all the staff having involved in, you know, before. My question here is, is, because when I visit this adult education, and some student asked me that, could we provide the communication class for the student? Because a lot of worker, they, all they need is, you know, communication skill, so they can go work right away. And I know that in the past, I had been asked, but we have not really provided. I think something that we can take a look of it?
We did put in the spring, there is a communications class that is offered in the afternoon. Correct, Kathy, that was the communications?
Okay, that should be good. That's something that I would consider and share back to everyone.
I'm going to move on to the program areas of enrollment. So, when we talk about, so these are duplicate accounts, Board Member Herrera. So, when we look at our program areas, we see that ESL is where our major decline took place in our enrollment. Our CT program is pretty consistent. We did have some drops in, in high school diploma as well, and in our ABE. So, that just kind of gives you a snapshot by program of where we lost students.
That's, that's an interesting point for, I don't know how it would be used, but for the general, or the community at large, to become aware of some of the impacts of what's going on in, in the climate nationally and, you know, whatnot. That, you know, it leads all the way to different sectors of the community, including programs like this. Because I think that's a good guess, or intuition as to what's behind the drop.
Do we still have the automobile workshop?
So, one of the classes that we have partnered with San, Evergreen Valley College is, it's a six-week class. It's a bridge class. It's an automotive class, where students have an opportunity to explore the introduction to automotive. And actually, we've expanded it for the spring. So, students will be in three different courses. They will be able to explore automotive, surveying and geometry, and as well as engineering. So, those classes will be taught by Evergreen professors on our Independence Campus. They will get non-credit at Evergreen, but we will give them elective credit at adult ed.
Yeah, but I know that some of workers, you know.
But it's not the hands-on one.
I know, that's something is, is really interesting to me, because when I visit, you know, the community, and they also said that, you know, with the high cost living here, and they like to learn, you know, at least they can fix their own cars, without going to the higher level, because they might not have time to really go to the next level, but at least to understand and really help them to fix their own car, so they can go to work and move on to their life. So, something is like, maybe we're going to have to take a look of it? And, and really putting the notion that, how can we hope, we help those worker that, you know, it's just not that easy for them to coming, then they have to find a job right away, but they're going to have to continue to go to school. But at least the basic things that they need to have is their car.
And, and so, one of my goals and mission is to understand community need, and what classes do we need to offer? And so, that's kind of an opportunity that we have to expand. And so, we'll take note of the automotive, but we do have a bridge class that kind of gives the introduction. And if we can connect our students to our consortium school, so where they can maybe develop or a pathway into automotive. Evergreen Valley College now has a partnership with Tesla. And so, there's opportunities there for, and I'm jumping ahead to my opportunities, but even for our opportunity youth, if we, if we tap into our students who are on our campuses, who are struggling to survive there, and they're not graduating on time, if we can connect them to school and with an opportunity, you know, into a work or a pathway, then those are the things that we want to explore and be able to offer. So, we'll note the automotive requests to come back, and we'll have those discussions and figure out what that would look like, and what we would need to do to be able to bring our community base, because that's a community-based education, right? And so, it's not just automotive, it's, it's the international cuisine, it's the sewing, it's all these different points of interest for community. And so, how do we bring community-based education back into Eastside would be something that we would need to look at, and how to, how to schedule that, with the space that we have available. And so.
Sorry, I have a question. For adults with special needs, is there support for that?
So, that's a good question. So, within a consortium, we do have an individual who is dedicated to supporting all the schools with, to support their students with, with disabilities. And so, when we talk about adults and adults with special needs, adults don't come to us with IEPs, right? And so, they either have to self-report, or there might be an issue that maybe a staff member might see that there's something different happening. And it, it's kind of hard to identify. If you've been out of school for ten years, yeah, you might not be the, you know, the sharpest knife in the drawer when you walk in on day one. And so, it, it takes the person who's in the consortium, she's going to train our staff in how to respond and to deliver instruction, so that it meets the needs of all the students, and some of the things that they can do to help someone who might have dyslexia, or who might have some learning challenges. When you talk about, we don't have our moderate to severe students in the adult education program. They're still part of the district program. And so, we don't service students with special needs in that capacity. So, we do try to equip our staff with the tools, so that they can service those students who have learning challenges within their classroom. There are some times that people come that have situations that are beyond what we can service. There, there are referrals that might be made to other agencies to kind of get that person the help that they need. But if we're talking about a learning disability of maybe being able to have extra time if they're preparing for GED, and so, we can do that. That's what our resource person for the consortium does, is to help that person navigate and be able to get extra time when taking the test. So, there are services that will be allowed to help.
What about the high school students that would come with an IEP?
We honor, so their accommodation page comes over, the teachers are aware of it, and they get the accommodation that is in their IEP. I review every student who has an IEP. I go through their IEP before they enroll in class. And so, most of them are, you know, needing extra time or notes. And a lot of them, they're not impacted necessarily. Our teacher are able to accommodate them in the classroom. Yeah, yeah, mild to moderate. So, when we looked at the challenges, and some of the challenges that I came across at the beginning of the year, one of the first things was being understaffed in the beginning, and understaffed meaning from my office personnel. Some at Overfelt, we were down to people even at IEC. And so, I had staff who worked double shifts. So, sometimes there might have been delays in, in getting some assessments done, or some people on the waiting list. So, we had some issues in being understaffed. The unique thing about adult ed is that they're temporary employees, and when I, or temporary, part-time. And so, hiring staff in time for school to start, to me, was a challenge. I just thought it was the craziest thing. But I think we did well for the spring semester. And so, it's as if we create classes that accommodate the staff that we have, not so much have the class, and then find the staff to meet the needs. And so, trying to figure out how to do that is, is a challenge and a different way of thinking for me. And so, those are some kind of challenges and things I need to figure out. But starting school and not having everybody in a place definitely was a challenge for me. But everybody pitched in, jumped in, and, and we were good for it. Some of the other challenges are ESL classes are not always convenient. We often have ti, people who want, and so, this can be another reason for low enrollment. People need to go to work, and people are working two jobs. And it's not convenient for students to come to school five days a week, from nine to twelve, or three nights. They have families, they have childcare issues. People have life, and sometimes it's not convenient to be someplace five days a week when they're trying to live. So, looking at maybe some possible models of maybe distance learning for ESL. And so, the benefit of being part of a consortium is that we can consult with other adult schools and what they're doing, and maybe take some best practices away, and applying them to our environment. So, those are some things that I will be looking at, because, you know, I, I said at Overfelt on Wednesdays, and I hear people come in, and they want to go to class, but the time our classes are offered doesn't fit their schedule. And so, they're not able to take advantage of the opportunity. So, those are other things that are, are challenges, and we need to figure out how to work around that. So, we offer the best opportunities for those members of our community. And again, determining what community need. What, what, we went to a, a data class, so there's data out there that tells us who we serve, and, and when we look at workforce, some of the, what the workforce is looking for. And so, sometimes we can offer those things that people can come and be retrained and get certificates from. But again, we need to be able to know who our community is. So, it may be surveying our community, putting a button on our webpage, and figuring out how to get community to respond, to tell us what they're interested in. So, that's kind of the quickest and easiest way that I can determine that, to get immediate feedback. So, that would be something I would be looking forward to doing within the spring, as we ramp up for the fall.
And Tracy, just a quick point of clarification. When you say understaffed office personnel, it was really vacancies that weren't filled?
Exactly. They were vacancies that weren't filled. There were, there were staff members who were on leave, and so, you can't hire somebody, so you have subs working. And so, until somebody retires, or they return back to work, that position is kind of held. And so, everything from custodian down to attendance secretary, it was, yeah, but we got it done.
Did you advertise to the local community for those positions?
I'm sorry, can't.
Did you advertise for those position to local community, so to find, you know, some replacement for your vacancy?
So, the jobs are posted on EdJUN. So, they are, they are published, they, they go through the same hiring process as our other positions in the district. And so, all community can see the availability of, of those positions. So, coming in, passing clerical test, or whatever the test might be for hiring, those tend to be the.
But I know that not everyone know EdJUN, because some position might not be for the teachers, it's more staff. So, they probably would not know. So, I, I just suggest that I went to the local community, and maybe with some advertising, you know, I think that's something that's probably will best serve the community as well as the school.
It looks like Dr. Rubio wanted to chime in.
I just wanted to add, just so the board knows, Tracy had requested back in August, and, and proto-superintendent as well, can, can we loosen up a little bit of some of our. can, can we loosen up a little bit of some of our current processes and system to help facilitate additional hiring? It came up with child nutrition, it came up for, for the adult ed division. So we're continuing to look also, besides the importance of advertising, which is your point, I think, at how can we continue to look for additional flexibility in our processes around testing and requirements which sometimes become the, a very big barrier in this very difficult economy. So I just wanted to alert the board on that topic because we're in the middle of looking at that right now as well.
And if I can get an example, I'm just gonna put this in here because I have a sub working right now at Overfelt who is wonderful. Wonderful. And she applied for the opening, but she didn't pass the typing test. I don't need her to type. So she typed 38 words a minute, required 45. She's not eligible, but she is wonderful. And so she's not available to hire, but we gotta go back to the drawing board, repost and do all that. So I will be happy to help and give my two cents on revising any practices, but those become negotiated conversations as well, I believe.
Those are district requirements. Are, are, are those district requirements or whose requirements?
Oftentimes, they have been just district, district practices which, which are solid and, and there's good rationale behind them. But, but I think sometimes they, they've been in place for so long as the economy has changed and sometimes there aren't as many applicants. Sometimes I think we need to look at them and to readjust.
They're just old.
So, and, and I think what, what Vaughn mentioned or referring to earlier is, is maybe there are ways to advertise these position in the ethnic media community. Like if you want ESL classes teacher, you could, you know, you should add joy, you might also advertise in like, like bilingual Latino or Vietnamese newspapers or something. I think that's another way to put it.
We certainly can and it looks like your budget can support it, so I, I see no reason not to.
I empathize with you. You know, like running a school is really hard just by itself when you're fully staffed. But when you're understaffed and if you have somebody who has a skill set, you know meshes with the culture, can get the job done, why not?
So, so two things, the person is there as a sub and working to get it done, but we are an organization that has unions and we negotiate job descriptions and we negotiate the requirements for the each classification. It's not, if I could just go in and change it as soup, I would. But I have to, we have to negotiate these things. So it's not like that, but we are working on it. Absolutely, absolutely.
But, but at least if we can advertise on ethnic media, probably will be very helpful.
That one we don't have to negotiate.
And so Dr. Rubio got that note and so we will work together to make sure that all our positions are advertised across the board. Moving on, so my opportunities. So as I mentioned earlier, I am the lead in the consortium for working with opportunity youth and that's from 16 to 24. So my work and passion for this kind of spun out of attending the grand opening for the Unity Care Facility on Monterey, the transit, for their transitional housing for their foster youth and watching the monitor say that less than 40% of students who transition and turn 18 leave with a high school diploma. And I'm like, what are we doing? They're 18 at that point. Send them to me, we can get them a GED. And so partnering with Foster Youth and also working with Student Services with Jen Kinsale, who serves on the Foster Youth Allies Alliance Committee. I am now, I'm going to attend those meetings with her just so that we're able to make sure that our, our youth know about Adult Ed, that we make sure that they leave with either diploma or a GED or, and we transition to the workforce. And so that is an area within the consortium, that is a project, that is a priority and I am the lead on that. And so that is work that we'll be developing going forward. This next one is an action that, again, taking the lead in the consortium and going to come back to you at a later date for an approval on this, but looking at high school diploma credits for adults. And I'm gonna go to this slide here. And I, when I started working on the schedule for the spring and looking at the different brochures that different adult schools had, I noticed that Castro Valley, which is the last column, they had for their high school diploma graduation requirements was 140 credits. So that caused me to say, well, why are we 190? And so as I kept digging deeper and digging deeper and I tried to figure out why do we require adults, not our concurrent high school students, but adults to have 190 credits when again, they're working multiple jobs, they have families. And I did a comparison, so the first column is the state. Our state requirement says that to get a high school diploma, the minimum requirement is 130 credits. And you can see what it is across all subject areas. And then next to the state is Eastside. And when you look at Eastside, you see that we are 190. And the major difference is that we require 70 credits of electives. So then my question is, why do we need adults to have 70 credits of electives? Right now, I don't have 70 credits worth of electives to offer them. I have CTE, but, and, you know, but work counts, some other things count. And so as a consortium, I brought the same chart up to the consortium. So then we have Campbell next to Eastside and we have Santa Clara. And so we're consistent within the 190, 200, 180 across the consortium. And so as a consortium, we agree that those graduation credits are higher than necessary for adults and the work to reduce is something that all adult schools are interested in doing. And so the path in going forward is to go to each district and present to their board the potential of reducing the high school graduation requirements. And they realize that Eastside will be taking the lead because I'm the one that brought it up. So I'm bringing this before you now for your thoughtful consideration as, you know, in the future, that this is something that I think is worth discussion. I think we need to look at our practice, I think we need to ask ourselves why. I know it, in the past, it might be because that's what our SBNs require and that's how we validate a diploma. But again, when we look at who we serve and if we're serving adults who have lives, who are trying to get to work, we're in one of the expensive counties and how are we, and maybe that's why we drop in, in issuing diplomas because people can't stay committed to the program because it's gonna take too long. So this is something that I would like to, you know, thoughtful consideration. And as we work through it in consortium, when we're ready to bring it back after we figure out what is a reasonable number for our high school diploma, then that, that conversation will take place. But this is an opportunity and something that I am looking forward to making a change and revision in, in what we offer.
That like so totally makes sense that, I mean, at the next board meeting, I'm ready to vote to support that change. You know, but I hear that you're working with a consortium process.
And we don't have to wait. They know where to leave, but we could leave by example.
What you're saying totally makes sense.
I, I also want to point out that I really appreciate, so you're talking about tailoring this toward adults, you know, looking at health, career development and financial literacy. Those are things, those are classes I need right now. I mean, I think that, that's, you know, when you're talking about the needs of adults, I mean, that's really, to me, like, let's really address what we're talking about here. So I, I would just theoretically endorse the change as well.
Thank you. And so it'll be just coming up what's reasonable for the, the credits. And so that would be what we, I would bring back.
We're gonna have an easy path forward on this one.
Okay. Where's my snack?
So I, I appreciate everyone's feedback, but there's some unintended consequences that we need to discuss as a board. As you know, I'm one that looks at the graduation requirements for our current high school students. I've made the recommendation to adjust those and lower them, to add other requirements to the graduation. So I'm open to the concept, but there will be unintended consequences that we need to discuss as the board. So let's just be careful on how we're, are we gonna vote without having the full discussion? I just ask you to be aware of that.
I appreciate that. Thank you, yes.
And I, I'm hearing that too and I, I have a bias, you know, you know, the bias is, Tracy was just phrasing it, you know, adults with families and jobs are a different, you know, equation here, to use that word, than our K-12, our, our high school population and so on. So I'm willing to err on the side of enabling, you know, a movement forward for adults who are deeply in their lives and their work and what have you, rather than be stuck on, you know, the, the, but we'll have that discussion.
Exactly. Let's have, let's table this and have that discussion when we have the discussion.
Yeah, well, you know, there's little, and I wanna, so.
Okay. So a few more opportunities going forward. Become a GED HISAET testing site. Right now, we have the GED prep class, but we are not a testing site. So when our students are done with our GED prep class, they take the GED test at Metro Ed. So this doesn't cost anything or require anything other than me making an application to the state, ensuring that the facility is secure and we can become a testing site. HISAET is a high school equivalency test that is also recognized. And so one of the, the things, it gives them choices of whether or not they want to take GED and HISAET. And so being able to provide people choices, I think is important. So I would like Eastside to become a testing site so that our students don't have to go to another location for their exams.
Approved.
Tracy, is, is the HISAET the same as a proficiency, like where you test out of school?
It's a, it's a different equivalency test. It's not Chesapeake, but it's a, it's an equivalency test recognized by the state and employers will recognize it.
Well, what it means to become a testing site, like is there additional cost, like what?
So you, you submit the request to the state, you have to ensure that your facility, A, can house testing materials securely, that you have the space to test, and then you have to have a calendar to schedule, you know, tests at a certain frequency. So for instance, like some of our high schools, they are regular testing sites for SAT, right? So it's still through ETS. And so they, so I think Silver Creek is a testing site for SAT. So it's done at the second Saturday of the month and they are a testing site. And so people log online and they register and they go there for the test administration for that day.
So this is just a quick technical change. We don't need board approval to be a testing site.
No, I'm, I'm just saying the opportunity to offer our students. And then other opportunities that we talked about earlier is to expand course offerings. Again, determining the need of the community, be able to expand offerings. And as we work with our partners at the community college, maybe we're able to bring more bridge classes so that they're able to take classes on our campus and hopefully we can give the warm handoff to our community partner, uh, community college partners. And then the last one is called Section 243 Grant. This is additional funding that's in the federal, in the WEOWA grant. And so we kind of don't have a choice to get on board with this, but we do have to prepare for it. So this is a grant opportunity that the grant application opens in 2020. And this grant says that for our ESL, our students, to also make sure that they get the workforce training. And it's not just having a CT, CTE class offering, but that we actually have a program that focuses on workforce preparation and training. And so this grant is something that we want to apply for, but we also will have to put classes in place, program in place, find appropriate staff so that we're able to offer that program. Looking forward into 1920, if we already have certain classes and start ramping up, that would help us to write that grant more effectively for a proper award. So this is a money opportunity for us to bring more money into the district. If we're able to set up our program to where we're offering the ESL proficiency and literacy as well as the workforce training. And so there's a difference in prep and training. And so that's what Grant 243 requires for us.
Is that a competitive grant? Or if we have it in place, we basically would get it?
So, and depending on how the pool is, it depends on how many applicants are at the time because, right? And it's a three-year, so you can only enter every three-year. So we would have to apply for 2020. If we don't apply 2020, we're not eligible to apply to 2023.
But if you got the first year, it's more likely to be a second.
Depending on your performance, because your, your performance is measured. And so if we did not get the return or the expectation of how we wrote what our plan was, then it'll get looked at a little differently. The feds would, would then, you know, award or not award accordingly to your performance. So it's performance-based. And with that.
Questions? So how, how many staff does the Adult Ed program have? And I understand, you know, we're mostly talking temporary, part-time.
So I have approximately 77 teachers and then at about 20 office personnel and I have two site administrators.
And what's the general sense of the workforce climate, the Adult Ed program climate? If I were to talk to people over there and what would, what would I hear?
So when you say workforce climate.
Well, the staff, you just enumerated.
What would my staff say?
Staff, staff.
It is a great place to be, it's, they're having a wonderful time, they love their new director. Happy?
So, so I'm not surprised.
They walk around with smiles on their face. I require that. And, and so.
So, so Tracy.
So, so change is never easy. So I, I think, not for everyone. And so even within the consortium and some of the things that we have to do, there are some things that have to be done that impact the work. And so there might be some that, you know, aren't as happy because it kind of shifts somewhat the way they, they're used to doing things like, for instance, in ESL, the individualized education plans. That's something that we need to keep track of, that we need to monitor, that might be uncomfortable, but it's work that's necessary. So they might not be happy. But for the overall, I believe that the, the staff at Adult Ed, they, they love their job, they love the community that they serve, that's why they do what they do. Because again, they're only working maybe 15 hours a week, some of them only 27 hours a week. So they're really, you know, part-time people and, and they're an older staff, so they love what they're doing. And so I think they're content, I think they're happy and, until they retire.
So I, I'm excited that we have someone of your caliber over at Adult Ed. I think it's a heck of a match, you know, for, for the potential that's, that's there and the way you laid out, you know, both the status and the, and the, and the potential moving forward. I, I feel so lucky. And Adult Ed, for me, has always had a special place in my heart. And I've often, over the years, used the phrase that, that for me, Adult Ed is like, like the Ellis Island of our community, a place for coming in more, you know, more expanding opportunities for a segment of the population that really does need these kinds of entry points and, and resources. And I've always felt very protective of Adult Ed because of its nature and character and place in the, in the community. And it's great that you're there. And I'm just gonna close by saying, it is of interest to me to back up the feeling sense and the anecdotal sense of climate with periodic climate surveys, to actually have data on that and opportunity for feedback into the system at ground, from ground level. So just putting that out there.
Thank you. And so we have surveyed our staff and our students to death as we are preparing for our WAS visit, so we.
So you do have that data?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe more from students than from some staff. Staff is more around professional development, but yeah, so.
But Tracy, I really appreciate this presentation. I think I'm the one that request for Adult Education Ed presentation and I really appreciate your hard work. I know that it's just, you've been to Adult Education Ed just only for six, seven months, right? I know everything is still new, but I hope that I continue to visit Adult Education Ed and, you know, with the new board member. And also we, you know, I'm very involved in the community. And anything that you need, you know, let me know. So anything that we can work together and support Adult Education Ed.
Thank you. And I welcome your input. So since you're in community, that helps bring it back to us and how we're doing and performing. So I appreciate your feedback.
Well, I'm, I, I don't know you about Manuel, but I, I've been here 14 years and this is the first time that we have such a thorough presentation about the Adult Ed program. It's, yeah, we didn't have the presentation down to the level of, of the demographic of the students at the Adult Ed program. We, we didn't. And so this is very thorough, this is very, um, exceptional presentation from the Adult Ed.
Thank you. And, and one of the new things with the consortium is that we do have a data team. And so that was one of the things that was realized that was missing from a lot of DA that they didn't really have a way to get their data. And so that data team has been supporting all the adult schools and providing that information, so. team has been supporting all the adult schools and providing that information. So that's been a plus.
You are a quick study. I say, I mean, that, you have an impressive command of this.